Good evening, my name is Rolando Bonilla and I am the Vice Chair of the San Jose Planning Commission. Jennifer, please cue the video.
Hola y bienvenidos a esta reunión. Para acceder a la función de interpretación, haga clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la ventana de Zoom y seleccione el idioma que desea. Para escuchar claramente el audio de interpretación, le recomendamos que también seleccione la opción para silenciar el audio original, que es la opción más baja en el menú después de hacer clic en el icono del globo.
Xin chào và cảm ơn quý vị đã tham dự buổi họp ngày hôm nay. Để truy cập vào phần thông dịch của ứng dụng Zoom, xin nhấn vào biểu tượng hình quả đi cầu ở phía dưới của màn hình và chọn ngôn ngữ theo ý muốn của quý vị. Để nghe rõ lời khuyên dịch, chúng tôi khuyến khích quý vị chọn chức năng tắt âm thanh góc nằm ở phía cuối trong phần tùy chọn của biểu tượng quả đi cầu.
Này, cảm ơn quý vị đã tham dự buổi họp ngày hôm nay. Nếu cần sử dụng tiếng nói của Zoom, hãy nhấn vào biểu tượng hình của Zoom bên dưới của màn hình, rồi chọn tiếng nói bạn cần. Để cho quý vị có thể nghe rõ tiếng nói của Zoom, chúng tôi khuyên quý vị nên tắt tiếng nói của Zoom. Hãy nhấn vào biểu tượng hình của Zoom bên dưới của màn hình, chọn từ cuối của biểu tượng.
Okay, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held via Zoom conference call due to the COVID-19 crisis. Members of the public may participate by following the instructions listed on the agenda. You may also view and listen to the meeting on live stream cable TV and YouTube. If you'd like to provide public comment, you have two methods to identify to provide public comment. All members of the public will remain unmute until the individual identifies they would like to speak and you are unmuted. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. With that, I'd like to now take roll call. Calleiro is absent. Chair Bonilla, Vice Chair Bonilla is here. Casey?
Here.
Garcia?
Here.
Dardanwa?
Here.
Oliverio? Oliverio? Torrance?
Here.
Perfect, thank you all. So with that, I will now go to the summary of hearing procedures. Public bear with me, it's quite substantive and, but it is important. After the staff report, applicants and opponents may have a five-minute presentation. City staff will call out names of the public who identify the items they want to speak on. You may identify yourself by the raised hand feature on Zoom. Click star nine on your phone, or you may call 408-535-3505, or email planningsupportstaff@sanjosaca.gov and identify your name, phone number, and what item or items you'd like to speak on. As your name is called, city staff will unmute you to speak. After we confirm your audio is working, your allotted time will begin. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. Staff will unmute the speaker to respond to the commissioner. The public hearing will then be closed and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The planning commission's actions on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20120-400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with Section 200.100.220 of the municipal code. So for all of you who felt like you went to law school, that's what it felt like for me as well. So with that, we now go to call to order, actually, study session, public hearing, item one, that happened at five o'clock today. So we will now move to call to order in order of the day, which I already read. And with that, we will now open this up to public comment. This is specifically for items that are not on the agenda. If you participate in public comment on an item that is on the agenda right now, we will cut off your mic as you will have the opportunity to weigh in when that item comes before the planning commission. So with that, Jennifer, do we have any general public comment at the moment?
I believe that we do.
Chair, I have a question. This is Vera Tatarov. I'm sorry, I was having trouble connecting and I connected a few minutes late and I wanted to know if you have gone through roll call yet.
We have.
Okay, thank you.
We are now at item three, public comment.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Some people had their hands up. Charles from Oakland, did you want to speak now or were you raising your hand for an item?
I will wait for the item on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other public comment?
Maria? You had your hand raised. Did you want to speak now or did you have an item you wanted to speak to?
Looks like she's still muted.
Maria, if you could unmute yourself? I will come back to her. Lovey, you are unmuted. Lovey Spencer, you had your hand up. Did you want to speak now or did you have an item you were waiting for?
Let's just keep moving.
Bee Beekman, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. I had a question to ask yourselves to begin this public comment time. I have a prior engagement I need to be at right now. I wanted to speak on the flea market item if that should be upcoming. I will review-
Mr. Beekman, that item is on the agenda. This is for general comment.
Can I ask you yourselves as a board, can I have allowance to speak on this item now because I have a previous engagement I need to be at?
Cut off the mic. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Rolando Brand. A quick question, is Coyote Valley on the agenda, yes or no?
Is that your public comment?
The question, I'm going to speak to Coyote Valley unless it is on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, great. So let me talk to you very briefly about Coyote Valley. Right now, it's a preservation area. And we have got to be realistic about what's happening to San Jose. There's got to be massive warehousing in North Morgan Hill. And whatever is being distributed in those warehouses is going to be hitting Highway 101. We have got another opportunity in Coyote Valley, right there south of the Metcalf Center, whereby we're right there next to the Union Pacific tracks, which means we can start bringing freight full distribution right there via rail instead of driving to clogging Highway 101 with semis. Now, I do understand, right now, this is a preservation area. And I live near there, actually just north of Tolarri Hill. I'm very familiar with the area. I'm very familiar with the wildlife. I live right across Santa Teresa Park. I've got deer in my front yard every night. We can do something extraordinary that nobody is even considering. We can actually develop the entire area south of Tolarri Hill, between Santa Teresa Boulevard and Monterey Highway, all the way down to Bailey Avenue, as long as you don't put any housing there. And we can design it in such a way as we're going to have hindering riparian corridors traversing the area and having multiple parcels, which obviously are not going to be rectangular, and still be able to achieve the kind of objectives we need to do for San Jose, which should have Amazon and other distribution centers right there on our boundary, in part of the city's urban influence zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Okay, Roland, you had your hand up. You are unmuted. Did you have an item you wanted to speak to or did you want to speak at public comment?
No, I just spoke. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Okay, any other public comment?
Okay, Arnold? You are unmuted.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I'm hoping those of you that are on the commission could use the rest of the time maybe to give me an answer. And that is regarding ministerial permit processes in the city of San Jose. We have a proposed project that is in South Bascom Avenue South urban village and we don't have an urban village plan. Therefore, I believe that the limits of building height would be the maximum that would be allowed in any urban village, which is 120 feet. Can somebody please answer me and tell me why the building height can't be regulated down further like it is in South Bascom Avenue North, where I believe some of the buildings are like 50 feet maximum? That's my question.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
We have call ID user four. You are unmuted. Could you please unmute yourself? Let me know if you need to speak on public comment or-
Hi, yeah. Yeah, my public comment is there's all this construction that they want to do. We're in, you know, a pandemic, economic meltdown. There's a shortage of everything. There's no way any building budget's going to be able to sustain itself with what you have in fuel costs, lumber, shortage of labor. Then you want to build in Coyote Valley where it floods, the flood zone. There's a reason the native American people didn't live there because it floods there. It's completely insane to think you're going to develop that. I mean, leave it to the animals there, to frolic. But there's all this construction, but the city of San Jose can't even maintain the Rose Garden. Right? How are they going to be able to build all these villages and all these wonderful transit centers and maintain it? You give all these subsidies. It's not going to work. It's not going to work. It's too expensive. It's not practical. And this is a city where, you know, if you have a shed in your backyard, you're regulated. If you have a flagpole that's too high, you're regulated. It's really, this city's priorities are completely out of whack. And to think that they're going to develop all these areas all at one time, it's going to be massive amount of pollution from all the dirt in the air, the silica in the air, the having traffic jams, road closures, and then they want to do road diets. This city is totally insane. They don't, the priorities are completely out of whack. And just wait until you start getting these bills for the construction materials. It's out of control and it's not, there's a shortage of computer chips, glass, vehicles.
Your time is up. Brenda, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Sendejas. I just had a quick comment that I got from community members. Is there any way this meeting is being streamed live? And if it is, is there a link where they can watch it? Some people can't log in through Zoom, so they requested to know if there is a live streaming of this meeting. Thank you. You guys have a wonderful day.
Next public comment.
L? You are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. Yes, yeah, so I have some general question regarding, so since I don't know if it's on the agenda, but it's the Mercado Park and the Union Park. Yeah, so we are the resident here in the community and then we were told this park will be, these two parks will be built very soon. I moved in like four years ago and then I know my neighbors, they've been moving here more than four years ago that we were told the park would be built. But it's just that we are concerned that like so many construction developments going on and, you know, but we still haven't seen the park being built. And I couldn't find out like, because they said developer put it on hold. I don't really know who puts this on hold. I tried to contact the city. I didn't get any response. And in the meantime, it's just that there's just so much dirt because of the construction and because the park is just, it's just, it's just like a dirt lot right there. And then it's on the flea market, it's all this, the parking, people, you know, park in our streets. I mean, it's a public street, but just so many flea market customers, they will park here. So yeah, so we're kind of concerned about that. Thank you.
Okay, that is all. And I did want to mention that this is being streamed on YouTube. There should be a public broadcast. I don't know if we have the link on the agenda here though.
It's San Jose Planning Commission on YouTube.
Chair, I also think we're on television, right, on the Community Access Channel?
Oh, yes, yes, we are. Sorry, delay. Okay, with that, we move to item four, deferrals and removal from calendar. The staff or a member of the public seek to have something removed from the consent calendar? If so, raise your hand.
I was just, I was trying to ask during the previous item, do we know when new commissioners are going to be seated yet?
Staff, do you have an answer to that question?
I do, yes, I don't know, actually. The clerk's office is working on that process.
That's the clerk's office is working on that process. Um, but I don't have an answer. That will have to get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we will go now to, uh, deferrals and removal from calendar. I did ask if there was anyone from the public or from staff wanting to remove something from the consent calendar. Seeing none, Jennifer, do you see any?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, seeing that, we will now move on to item five, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Lard and Wong.
Vice Chair.
Yes?
Hi, um, staff would like to provide an update for item number B.
B, ah, perfect. Okay. Well, then let's do that then. Let's, let's go to the staff update.
All right, thank you. Um, good evening. Um, the staff report and resolution were amended last week after the posting to reflect the corrected square footage typos in the conditional use permit findings and remove findings. Uh, remove the duplicate condition of approval, um, correcting the staff report outreach section and updating the green building ordinance requirements. Um, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any, any more surprises or is that the update? All right, so with that, Lard and Wong had a motion with Oliverio with a second. So with that, we will vote. Bonia, I, Casey?
I.
Garcia?
I.
Pardanwa?
Hi.
Oliverio?
Hi.
Torrance?
Hi.
All right, with that, the measure passes. We now move over to item six. And that is-
Chair, at, chair, after each vote, you need to, um, you, I, I think we have it on video, but you also need to, under state law, um, state what the vote is, and what the vote is. Um, if it is not, you need to say unanimous, or it's, for example, in this one, six zero one with caballero accent.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. All right, we will now move to the public hearing, and this is, uh, we're now opening up for public hearing. And with that, staff presentation for item six A, PP twenty dash oh one three.
Okay, and then do the screen share. If, uh, if I can do the screen share, thank you. Okay, hopefully you're seeing my screen. Okay, um, good, you chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Brent Carvalho and I'm the project manager for this ordinance update with reference number PP twenty dash zero one three. Uh, through this proposed ordinance, we are looking to create six zoning districts, which will correlate with existing general plan land use designations that currently lack conforming zoning. The new zoning districts are urban village commercial, urban village, mixed use neighborhood, mixed use commercial, urban residential, and transit. In addition to creating new zoning districts, this ordinance will include adding or revising definitions in the zoning code, as well as minor text edits to improve clarity. In 2018, planning staff received direction from the mayor to initiate this effort to align the zoning code with the general plan. And the California State Legislature passed SB thirteen thirty-three, which became effective in 2019, and requires that charter cities like the city of San Jose bring their zoning ordinance into alignment with their general plan. In order to address this work, staff divided it up into multiple phases. Phase one A, which was approved by city council in June of 2019, included updating existing zoning districts to better align with the general plan. Phase one B, creating new zoning districts to implement high density residential, mixed use, and urban village general plan land use designations. This refers to the current proposed ordinance that we are presenting today. After these zoning districts have been created, all of the mixed use and high density general plan land use designations will have conforming districts, making it possible for these properties to be brought into, into alignment as part of the phase two work. And that brings us to phase two, which is the actual rezoning of properties to conform with the general plan designation. Um, in this, I just wanted to bring together all of the general plan land use designations, uh, that we're talking about here tonight. And also with the urban village growth areas, so that you can get a bigger picture of how they look in relation to the rest of the city. The general plan land use designations are meant to provide direction on how and where various land uses may occur. And this map is really just meant to highlight where the existing high density commercial, residential, and mixed use general plan land use, land use designations are. And once we have officially created the new zoning districts, they will eventually conform to these general plan land use designation. So to give you some background on the public outreach that we've, uh, done so far. Uh, in July 2020, the informational website was updated to provide a repository of information related to the ordinance update, including meeting recordings, draft documents, and contact info. In August and September of 2020, planning staff evaluated the proposed zoning districts through a test fit analysis in order to provide a high level overview of feasibility of project construction using the draft development standards. In August 2020, the Urban Land Institute helped to coordinate a meeting between representatives of David Baker Architects, Bay West Development, and City of San Jose Planning Staff in order to test the draft development standards for the new zoning district. A couple of examples of outcomes that came from this important work included identifying the need for clarifying how the FAR or floor area ratio controls work in relation to the mixed use development, as well as the need for setting minimum levels of dwelling units per acre for mixed use development. Staff clarified the FAR controls for mixed use development by adding text in to explain that there's no minimum FAR for mixed use development, except in mixed use commercial. Uh, staff also clarified that the FAR ratio, ratios for mixed use development refer to the overall combination of both the residential and commercial use. In addition, staff set minimum dwelling units per acre in the urban village, urban residential, and transit residential zoning districts. The general plan does not provide minimum dwelling per acre for mixed use commercial or mixed use neighborhood. Instead, they have maximums, and so no minimum was added to those districts. Another key outcome from this test fit analysis was that the early draft included building heights, which were not high enough to facilitate the scale of development called for by the general plan. Existing language in the municipal code cites an allowance for development of up to 120 feet in urban villages. And that was the height which was included in the early draft. However, 120 foot building height presented issues for the higher density residential and mixed use designations, such as urban residential and transit. In response, staff proposed revisions to address these issues. Building heights for urban residential and transit residential were increased from 120 feet to 135 feet and 270, respectively. Uh, and then on November 12th, 2020, this marked our first community meeting, which was held virtually. We had 26 people in attendance. And the intent of this first meeting was to provide an informational overview of the scope of work and to explain the objective of aligning the zoning ordinance and general plan. Most participants expressed an interest in seeing a draft of the ordinance in order to better understand what was actually being proposed. And participants had questions about the timeline and some expressed concerns about the ordinance needing to- Staff addressed these concerns regarding the timeline and general interest in reviewing the draft language by releasing a preliminary draft of the ordinance to the informational website and also by extending the timeline to allow for more public input and for additional outreach to community meetings. On December 15th in 2020, the preliminary draft of the ordinance was published to the informational website for public review and comment, along with an orientation video which described the various sections of the draft ordinance. Staff was available for comments and offered time to, for open office hours during the month of January. Um, on January 20th in 2021, uh, we held a meeting with the Building Industry Association, or BIA. Uh, BIA reached out to staff about providing overview of the draft ordinance and staff coordinated a virtual meeting with BIA members to walk them through the preliminary draft and receive some of their feedback. At the meeting, BIA members provided a suggestion about the draft floor area ratio definition, and that was subsequently incorporated into the draft ordinance. On March 1st, 2021, uh, the second and third community meetings were held virtually with 56 attendees present at the 1:00 to 2:30 PM session and 51 attendees present at the 6:30 to 8:30 session. The intent of these meetings was to provide more extensive detail regarding the development standards included in the draft ordinance. Most of the comments at these meetings were related to community members' concerns about where the added density would be located, how population growth projections were calculated and tracked over time, whether there had been adequate analysis to ensure the city's resources could sustain the additional density, and general questions about the city's outreach process. Some participants asked questions about open space regulations, specifically how the requirement is calculated, whether there was any consideration for increasing private and common open spaces requirements in light of COVID, and why there is a reduced requirement for private and common open space in mixed use development. Staff clarified that the existing envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan addressed where growth should occur throughout the city, and that it also went through an environmental review process to ensure that the plan adequately addressed environmental needs. Staff also addressed comments about private and common open space requirements by reassessing the requirement to better align them with existing open space requirements. On April 17th of 2021, uh, staff presented a draft ordinance to the Almrock Urban Village Advocates, or ARUBA. Uh, staff provided a general overview and comparison of the urban village and mixed use zoning districts as they relate to the pedestrian oriented zoning districts, which apply to the Almro, Urban Village. On May 3rd, the revised draft of the urban village and mixed use zoning district ordinance was posted to the informational website for public comment and public review. Uh, on May 10th, follow-up, follow-up conversation with BIA was held to discuss potential edits to private and common open space requirements. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of those specific details later in the presentation. I also wanted to note that in addition to these dates and events that staff that I mentioned, staff provided periodic email updates to roughly 1,000 residents and members of, of organizations throughout the period of time to inform the public about upcoming meetings and hearing dates. I wanted to highlight some of the outcomes of passing this ordinance. Um, approving this ordinance will provide certainty and predictability for developers and the community. Uh, by providing clear, objective standards for high density development, it will also help streamline the process for building and approving mixed use development. It will also create high quality new development. This ordinance will create modern standards for development, and these new zoning districts will work together with the recently adopted citywide design standards and guidelines. All of those very important design related information and regulations will apply to development within these new zoning districts. And finally, it will bring the city into compliance, compliance with state laws. Um, adopting the new zoning districts creates a pathway for us to comply with SB thirteen thirty-three. Under, under Senate Bill, uh, three thirty, the city cannot approve a down zoning, which is a rezoning that reduces the residential capacity of a property, unless the city also approves an equivalent up zoning on a different property. And Senate Bill nine forty allows cities to bank those upzomings for future downzomings, which will be a valuable tool for us as we navigate the phase two of our rezoning effort. And our ability to bank up zonings through SB nine forty is also dependent on the passage of these zoning districts, because we are not able to use this provision until we have conforming zoning districts for all of our general plan land use designation. I wanted to take some time to explain how our collective development policies or regulations work together with our new zone. Uh, the general plan serves as the constitution for development in our community. And it sets the stage for how, when, and where development can occur. And it provides general guidance regarding how the zoning ordinance should regulate development. The general plan includes a land use map and planned growth area map, which lays out where most growth will occur throughout the city. While the urban village and mixed use land use designations already exist in the general plan, currently, there are no urban village and mixed use zoning districts, which provide development standards to allow the scale of development that the general plan actually allows. And that's really the reason for the ordinance that we're talking about here today. We are creating zoning districts in order for them to align the general plan. Uh, the general plan also includes a major strategy for future growth, which involves creating urban village plans. The urban village plans are related to specific areas of the city and further refine how development should occur in order to achieve walkable, bicycle friendly, and transit oriented neighborhoods with a mix of commercial and residential uses. The zoning ordinance implements the general plan by setting the specific standards for development on each property. Every parcel in the city of San Jose is assigned a zoning district, and that zoning district provides controls on form and placement of buildings on individual parcel. Some examples of those controls are building heights and setbacks. Finally, we have the citywide design standards and guidelines, which were just adopted by the city council on February 24th of 2021. And this, these will provide the fine grained regulations for how buildings will look and feel in the built environment. Next, I wanted to talk about some of the changes in permitting requirements for mixed use development. Historically, mixed use development in commercial zones has required a conditional use permit, which is approved by the planning commission. And in residential zones, it requires a special use permit, which is approved through a director's hearing. In the new zoning districts excluding urban village commercial, mixed use development will be a permitted use. This represents a monumental shift toward better facilitating mixed use development by streamlining the process for mixed use development that the general plan is calling for. And that we now, and that we know makes for stronger, more complete and thriving communities. The decision makers will no longer need to make findings such as whether or not the development will be quote unquote detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, simply because it is a development with a mix of residential and non-resident uses. I also wanted to note that mixed use development will require public noticing along with public hearings, unless the project utilizes a streamlining process for affordable housing under state law. Uh, another example in our mixed use neighborhood zoning district, um, townhouses and row houses and small lot subdivisions represent another example of how our new zoning districts will offer a more streamlined process for development. Historically, townhouses, row houses, and small lot subdivisions are typically approved through a planned development zoning and planned development permit. Again, this is a significant shift toward facilitating this type of development by not requiring a planned development zoning or permit and allowing the uses as permitted. The new mixed use neighborhood zoning district was crafted in a way to provide a high degree of flexibility for the variety of development types allowed under this designation. And now today, staff is recommending some modifications to the open space requirements from what is in the draft, which was posted with the agenda. And unfortunately, it doesn't look like much of the ordinance was cut off in the supplemental version that was provided today before the hearing. Um, it still has the pertinent sections, however, um, who want to help provide, uh, the specific code sections that these- It still has the pertinent sections, however, who want to help provide the specific code sections that these revisions will apply to. So on this slide, I'm going to get into some detail and there's a lot to take in here. So I'd like to start off by putting this information in the context. These edits refer to section twenty point fifty five point one oh two. Which is the common and private open space requirements for residential or mixed use developments. And it refers to subsections C one, C two, D one, D two, and D three. On the top left, you can see the standards that were included in the preliminary draft that was shared with the public back in December twenty twenty. These numbers were based on a review of open space requirements from other cities. In total, we looked at about thirty cities across the country, mostly in California. And we came to the conclusion that there was no standard requirement for open space in mixed use or multifamily development. And every city sets their standards differently. So to come up with these numbers, staff took into consideration the recently adopted citywide design standards and guidelines. Which set minimum standards for private and common open spaces. And we came up with something that we knew would not create conflict with those standards. We did also receive initial feedback from the test fit analysis. That the new standards were proposed that we proposed were more in line with denser, more urban development. Now, on the top right, you can see the revised standard that was shared with the public earlier this month. When the ordinance was posted to the informational website on May third. This revision to open space requirements was made based on feedback from the community regarding the general need for more private open space. The importance of access to open space is something we know are community values and is something we frequently hear in feedback. Including feedback on this ordinance. Staff felt it was part of our due diligence to reexamine the open space requirements and evaluate whether we could increase the standards. And when comparing them to the previous open space requirements, we felt that we had taken, maybe we had taken the numbers down too low. Staff also took into consideration the numerous policies included in our general plan, which supports the addition of open space. And I'd like to provide just a few examples of those here. The attractive city policy C D dash one point five. Encourage incorporation of publicly accessible spaces such as plazas or squares. Into new and existing commercial and mixed use development. Connections policy C D dash three point eight. Provide direct access from developments to adjacent parks or open spaces. And encourage residential developments to provide common open space contiguous to such areas. Fiscal management of parks and recreation resources policy P R dash eight point two. Encourage privately owned and maintained and publicly accessible recreation spaces that encourage community interaction. Complement the private property uses. And when adjacent to existing and planned parks, trails, recreation facilities, or open spaces, connect them to these facilities. This policy is particularly important in dense urban areas. And finally, high quality living environments policy L U dash nine point six. Require residential developments to include adequate open spaces in either private or common areas to partially provide. For residents' open space and recreation needs. Staff also increased the standards, knowing that we could not, that we could always reduce the standards later. But we wouldn't be able to increase them later because of limitations under Senate Bill three thirty. Which wouldn't allow development standards to be revised in a manner that would reduce capacity of residential development as allowed by the general plan. Such as increased open space requirements. After sharing the second draft of the ordinance with the increased private and common open space. We received feedback from members of the development community that their preference was to use the standards in the first round. Their concerns are around increasing open space requirements and the impact and impacting the financial feasibility of projects. And so finally, you can see at the bottom of the slide, the proposed revision. Staff has included an amended version of the standards for private and common open space that we feel reflects concerns. That we have heard from both the public and from the development community. This revision represents a hybrid of the two versions. And offers flexibility for developers to right size their private open space requirements based on the unit types included in their development. And this revision also acknowledges comments from the public regarding the need for increased private and common opens.
Sorry, one second. Sorry, go ahead, continue.
Thank you, Jennifer. We are proposing a number of exceptions to the open space requirements in the last slide. Which I talked about in the last slide, for projects that have or that have or provide access to public open spaces. In addition to the edits I just mentioned, here are two of the proposed edits to the exceptions for private open space requirements. The first one is in relation to proximity to public open space. As the provision exists in the, in the second ordinance draft, it only refers to the public open space. And this revision will allow projects to reduce or eliminate their common open space requirements based on their proximity to existing public open spaces. Or POPOs, which are privately owned or maintained public open spaces. The second revision is with regards to a project's ability to reduce private open space by up to fifty percent. By providing an equivalent amount of common open space on site. Previously, this exception did not apply to projects which were exempted from the common open space requirements. And now this slide is meant to just provide a simplified example of how the private and common open space standards would apply to a project. At the top, you can see the proposed standards. Which are based on the housing product type, either one hundred percent residential or mixed use. For a one hundred percent residential project, which proposes one hundred units. They need to provide private open space for at least fifty of the units. Which based on the requirement of sixty square feet per two bedroom unit comes out to three thousand square feet total. Common open space for this development would require one hundred square feet per unit for a total of ten thousand square. The developer can then reduce the private open space to only apply to twenty five percent of the units. By adding fifteen hundred square feet to the common open space obligation for a total of eleven thousand five hundred square. For a mixed use project which proposes a hundred units, they need to provide private open space for at least fifty units. Which based on the forty five square feet per two bedroom unit comes out to two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet in total. Common open space for this development would require seventy five square feet per unit for a total of seven thousand five hundred square. The developer can then reduce the private open space to only apply to twenty five percent of the units. By adding one thousand one hundred and twenty five square feet to the common open space requirement. For a total of eight thousand six hundred and twenty five square feet. This is another revision that staff is proposing in response to feedback. Specifically in relation to an area that is designated as mixed use neighborhood in the Albi So area. Where development is constrained by the flood zone. In places like Albi So, you can see examples of homes which have a ground floor that is either unenclosed or unoccupied. Where it's usually served as a garage and storage space. And this is related to development standards which require buildings to be elevated by at least five feet. And staff is proposing a revision to table twenty dash one three seven, which is located in twenty point five five point one zero four. The mixed use neighborhood development standards. For single family homes and duplexes in the mixed use neighborhood zoning district, which are in a one hundred year flood zone. The first finished floor must have an elevation of at least five above grade, five feet above grade. The upgrade, and so the upgrade unoccupied space shall not constitute a story or floor. And does not count for the overall F A R calculation or the maximum number of stories as described in this section for anyone. The upgrade unoccupied space shall not constitute a floor or story as it relates to the conventional or alternate setback regulations within this section either. And the overall maximum building height included, including upgrade space that is not occupied. Is set at a maximum of four feet. And that brings us to the staff recommendation. Staff recommends approving the urban village and mixed use zoning districts and the associated revisions discussed here today. Revisions to private and common open space requirements, revisions to the mixed use neighborhood zoning district in table twenty dash one thirty seven. To accommodate the development in the one hundred year flood zone. And staff also recommends approval of associated revisions to incorporate the new zoning districts into other code sections. Revisions and additions of definitions and other minor substantive edits for clarity or format. And this concludes staff's presentation and staff is available to answer.
Hi Brett, thank you for that presentation, very thorough with that. We now open it up to public comment on this item. Jennifer, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have Gavin. Gavin, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hi, thank you very much. My name's Gavin Laurie from Catalyze S V. We've been following this change very closely. We really appreciate the city is working to provide the zoning for the urban villages that is conforming to the general plan. We believe that this clarifies a lot of the development requirements and will reduce some of the regulatory barriers for developers to build projects. And kind of have certainty around those projects. Additionally, we do really appreciate the conventional and alternate regulation that can be used for the mixed use neighborhood zoning districts. We believe this will provide the flexibility and incentive for creating small scale mixed use developments in areas that would conventionally just be housing. So we really appreciate this change. And this change will make it, these changes will make it easier for developers to get projects that conform with the, the city's goals through and built. So, so we really support these changes. So we hope the planning commission approves them. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
That concludes our speakers. We just had one, who's our hand, Elma. You are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Alma Redondo. I'm one of the co-chairs of ARUBA. And, and that is correct that the planning department did meet with the ARUBA group. But, and this was in April seventeenth. We didn't really have an opportunity to evaluate the website and all the changes which were complex. And the, the actual presentation, you know, we are not experts, we are not land use experts. So it was difficult to understand all the, the changes. But one thing that we are very concerned is what kind of, how it'll affect the Alum Rock quarter. And whether it will be a positive or negative, I couldn't say that we were able to determine that for our community. So. I, I, we would have liked to have the opportunity to discuss it more in detail in terms of specifically. How it would have changed, how it changes our community from, from this form based code that we currently have. It's not, I know that it's not called that in the, in the presentation. But we just kind of wanted a little bit more time in terms of an understanding of what, how this, how this change exactly affects us. Thank you.
Next public speaker.
Okay, Dennis, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Thank you. Dennis Martin, speaking on behalf of B I A Bay Area. I want to thank staff for their work on this, their outreach to the builders and their openness to. Listen to comments and concerns about the draft proposals. BIA has been advocating for years to. To get the city to put in place conforming zoning. The general plan, of course, was approved nearly ten years ago. And so the zoning code provides not only certainty to the developers in the community. But also protections for projects with zoning. Under the Housing Accountability Act and the State Permit Streamlining Act. So it's very important to have conforming zoning in the city of San Jose. And as for the open space concerns, thanks to the city again for reaching out and the compromise. We are still doing some analysis on it, but it looks very favorable and appreciate the work. So, thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Dennis, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Dennis just spoke.
Sorry.
Are there any other public speakers? Danielle?
We do have Arnold. Arnold, you are unmuted.
Thank you. I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on Elma Arredondo's comments. I do appreciate the planning commission to bring the zoning, the general plan and village plans into consistency. But I don't really think that this proposal is ready yet. I look at the table that was submitted in the proposal. And it only provides, for instance, in the urban village, a maximum of twenty, of a hundred and twenty feet of height. And yet there's, there's a footnote that says at the bottom that in the urban village plan, those heights can vary. Well, why don't you put a range on that so people don't automatically think that the urban village will grant up to a hundred and twenty feet? If the range is forty to one twenty or twenty five to one twenty, why don't you just put that in there? The other problem with the table is it's really not granular enough. When I look at the new designations, it doesn't, it doesn't help me. Understand the actual zonings that might be within those designations. For instance, community pedestrian or whatever the actual zoning is. It really doesn't create a meaning for me as a citizen. When I look at an urban village plan, there's neighborhood community designations, there's neighborhood designations. There's quasi-public-private, there is urban village. And I know that not every land designation has a, has a height of a hundred and twenty feet. So why don't you put that kind of granularity in the table? That way people can know in the urban village, these are all the particular zonings that are within there. Because I think when it comes to.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Call in user, you are. Call in user five, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak if you would like to have your comment.
Yeah, urban villages, everyone's calling up saying how wonderful they are. They look terrible. The design looks terrible. You know, they want to sit in old folks' homes and high density housing, no parking. If they have parking, it'll be limited with these tiny parking spaces. What kind of retail is going to survive in the age of Amazon? I don't know. What kind of restaurant is going to be able to survive without having natural gas? Because everything has to be all electric thanks to the environmental rules. You want to get rid of, you know, natural gas altogether, the county, the city, the state. Everybody wants to get rid of natural gas. How can you be able to run a restaurant with super high wages that have been imposed through minimum wage act? Great workers can make a little. with super-high wages that have been imposed through minimum wage act? The great workers can make a little extra money, but definitely putting small business people out. I just don't see how you're going to have an electrical grid and enough water in this state since the state refuses to build dams or or, you know, you know, house the runoff in reservoirs. They want to drain uh reservoirs. This, this is, this is not going to work. The building materials, like I said before, are going to be too expensive. Whole thing is a disaster. But you know what? I actually want the city to do all this because I want to, I want to see what a disaster it's going to be. And it's going to be. I mean, things are going to be unfinished. It's going to look like Argentina or Venezuela after a crisis. You're going to have like half-finished buildings, all rusted. Uh, you're going to have cement block housing. It's going to be terrible. And remember who told you. And I'd like anyone to call in and say, and say it's going to be different. It's not going to be a place with rainbows and unicorns and all this wonderful, all these wonderful things that everybody's talking about. It's not going to work. And I I'd like someone to call in and tell me that it does, it would work. And I also want someone to, who has a negative uh view of it like I do. I like to hear someone else call up and think, hey, say, hey, look.
All right.
Next speaker.
Amanda. You are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hi, yes, um, I would like, I I totally agree with what um the gentleman before me said. I think this is rushed. Also, who's going to live in these facilities? Um, there's a, a lot of us who work more than one job and still have to have a roommate to even afford living in San Jose. And there's a lot of people who are leaving because they can't afford to live here. So yeah, you can slap the word urban village and it sounds all cute. You can do hashtag whatever, but at the end of the day, who's going to live in these buildings? There are a lot of working families who need to live in affordable housing. And this is a huge slap in the face for the working community. And I don't, I I, if any of you disagree with me, then what bubble are you living in? You know, I, I'm sorry that I'm coming off rude and disrespectful, but you really need to put your shoes in the people who are going to be truly affected by the situation. I don't care how pretty you make the building look. It's not going to change the reality of what's going to take place for people who really need the resources. And this is not it. I think you guys need to really think about the decision that you're going to make. I yield my time.
Thank you. And next speaker.
Kevin, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I I just want to say that I think urban village is a great idea. And also, a lot of people have money, are willing to pay for this place. Trust me, uh, just look at, look at the the income. Average income for for the people in this area. Um, a lot of people will rent the place and I think it is a great idea. And um, and I forfeit my time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Erica, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Erica Paul Fox, and I'm honestly wondering how this will help our community. It cuts down significantly the flea market size. It seems as though development businesses will reap more benefits. Like, are there even plans to relocate our community vendors that belong, that are a part of the flea market?
I'm sorry, this, this item, this item is item nine, so you can speak then. Next speaker, please.
Okay, Serena, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Is that her connection or is that mine? No.
Hi, Serena.
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello.
Can you hear me?
Serena, we cannot hear you.
Yeah, let, let, Serena, if you can hear us, uh, try to get back online. We we are, we are not having a connection with you here. Next speaker, Jennifer.
Brian, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hi, good uh, good evening, commissioners, staff and members of the public. I'm a longtime resident of Barriessa and a practicing planner. I feel that this process has entirely been rushed. The public comment taking place two years before this decision is um being conducted, the the location of the community outreach being two miles away from the actual impact of the site is, and and the, the rush in passing this in conjunction with the project proposal raises a lot of questions. Um, and specifically, in light of the new proposal by the applicant on item ten, what planned policies will address um the marketplace, um both in circulation, land use and open space policies to address a, a, a new urban market use? I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Alex, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hey, good evening, commission. I know that some of our speakers are talking about the next item. We are just a reminder on the item related to urban villages, not the public market and Barriessa flea market and Barriessa urban village plan. So if folks I I know or folks are here for that, please just hold off. The planning commission is getting to your item. We're not there yet. I know there's a bunch of folks.
Are we on to the next speaker or did we cut them off?
Alex, were you done with your comment?
Oh, I was just, just saying, yeah, I think commissioners, it sounds like, I don't know if you could tell, but some folks are are weighing in on the next item like Brian, the last speaker. So
Oh.
I don't want folks to be confused and thinks there's major concerns about the urban village and there isn't. So anyway, I hope that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Next speaker.
Serena, um, you are unmuted. Go ahead and try again.
Are you listening now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. I just want to comment on the fact that it's great that we want to have consistency about the urban villages. However, it would be awesome if these like planning commissions would reach out to other groups other than developers to get their opinions about things, you know, because you're actually affecting communities and people's lives. So it'd be really good if you want to have consistency to maybe reach out to the people that you're going to be affected. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena, and I'm glad you tried again. Uh, next speaker.
Judy, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak. Go ahead, Judy.
One more time. Judy, are you there? All right, let's move on to the next speaker.
Okay, um, those are all our speakers. Um, Arnold and Brian had already spoke, so um, unless there's anybody else.
All right. Well, if there's no one else, then that concludes public comment. We are now at the portion of this public hearing where we have questions from commissioners to staff. Uh, and with that, uh, commissioners, are there any questions from you to staff? Commissioner Oviedo.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Brent, on the legislation you talked about on S B nine forty and S B thirteen thirty-three, approximately how much acreage in San Jose is not in conformance with the general plan? Thousands of parcels
Correct.
don't match the general plan.
Correct. Yeah, it's a large number because of, um, you know, since San Jose's adoption of its first kind of modern general plan in the seventies as we've adopted um successive general plans, the city hasn't rezoned those properties at the same time. So as a result, and and that's because we're a charter city and we haven't in the past been required to have our zoning be uh consistent with uh the, the general plan. That's changed with state law. So as part of phase two of this larger work, that's um what uh staff will be doing in terms of proactively rezoning properties uh to, uh, so they are consistent with their general plan land use designation.
Thank you, J- Jared. So tens of thousands of parcels, and I think the city maybe is roughly around two hundred and fifty thousand total parcels. Is that about right?
That's about right. Yep.
Okay, thanks a lot. Um, Brent, on the outreach, were any of the people, you know, the community members that attended the meetings, were, did any of them identify as actually living in um higher-density developments?
Um, that's a good question. Not necessarily that I'm aware of. I I did get the feeling that most people represented, people uh lived in our lower-density neighborhoods. And I'm sure as you're aware, um, you know, San Jose is a very low-density city. So it for the most part, I would, I would imagine that they were living in single-family homes.
Fair enough. And then Brent, um, could you put your slide deck back up and maybe it's about the third or fourth slide from the end where you talk about, um, I guess, uh, a project would be noticed and would have a public hearing?
Sorry, dude.
Keep going. Towards the end, I meant.
This one. Okay, so mixed use or, so we have a slide.
That last line will require public noticing and public hearing. Could you define what that public hearing is?
Um, so it would either go through the director's hearing, um, either as perhaps the site development permit. Or if there was a conditional use permit, uh, it would go through the planning commission.
Okay.
I think, and so this relates to mixed-use development as well. And and one of the reasons why for the most part, it's pretty much guaranteed that redevelopment of land into mixed-use development is that it will be, be developed from a smaller parcel or a smaller building. And so it will require a site development at the very least um in order to build something new on site that is mixed.
Thanks, Brent. And was there another slide that talked about something essentially the same, but it was with residential?
Um, we'll see. Yeah, this mixed-use neighborhood one, that talked about townhomes. Is that what you're referring?
Yeah, so that, that in itself will also require public noticing and public hearings of which you just mentioned, correct?
Correct.
Great. Thank you very much.
This is, Michael, if I could just interject for something.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, there's really something, a real takeaway I think the planning commission needs to have is this, this is a huge monumental change for the city. The way this city does business historically and even still does is you have to get a planned development zoning to do high-density mixed-use townhomes. We don't have zoning districts that allow those things, and that's how we've always been operating. That's our sta- that's our, how we do business. And it's, it's, um, because it's not just because of state laws. We were planning to do this work anyway. We really need to have zoning districts that align with the general plan, facilitate the development that the general plan wants to have. And the big change is, is that people won't have to rezone. So that means projects will not be going to planning commission and they will not be going to city council either. They'll be going to a director's hearing. Now, they'll be appealable to the planning commission, but in general, they'll be going to a director's hearing on a Wednesday morning. And just to, yes, as to, to, here Luigi was asking, Commissioner Oviedo is, there, there still is public noticing, there's still community meetings, there's still public hearings. It would just be the directors.
I thank you, Michael. Are there any other uh questions or comments from members of the planning commission?
Here.
I, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Oviedo.
Yeah, I noticed in the slide deck that Brent presented, there were a few renderings. And I'm just curious, Brent, do, are any of those renderings helpful to us in when we're thinking about this proposal?
Um, I left some of these slides in here in case you had questions about specific zoning districts. We do have some illustrative photo examples for you. If you feel like that would be helpful, um, I could walk you through a few of those as well.
Uh, Chair, I I I don't know. I I think there may be value for us in the public. What do you think?
You know, I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take it. I'll take those renderings. I think there is value. Uh, I mean, I've got some comments I want to make as well that I think touch on that. So the answer is yes, we, we should, we should look at those, those maps.
Okay, so I'll do a quick walkthrough here of the, um, so, uh, this is urban village commercial and the photo on the left is the Samsung campus and the photo on the right is the new Adobe campus. This was kind of meant to give you a high and low end of, or a low, excuse me, a low and a high end. The Adobe campus is a slightly higher F A R. I believe it's at about a ten F A R. And urban village commercial, I believe, um, maxes out at about an eight point or an eight F A R. And then, so if we move over to urban village. Um, so yeah, so on the left you have the eighty-eight, which is located in downtown. Um, this is a mixed-use development. And this, this represents kind of the higher range again. Um, and then on the right, you have an example of a, a lower-end uh development, a lower-range development F A R, um, which is located in Japan. I don't have the exact F A Rs of these.
That's, 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 that's great context. So I know Commissioner Oviedo is quite knowledgeable on these issues and asked some great questions, but I do want to know if any other of our colleagues have some questions as well, and this was very helpful. Are there any other comments from commissioners? And Jennifer, under the current framework, I don't know who's raising their hand.
Um, no commissioners are raising their hand at this time.
No commissioners. All right. Well, then, is there any commissioner remarks? And I I will go ahead and weigh in. I think Michael said it best. This is a huge monumental change for the city. Uh, we can't ignore that this is going to really impact the future of how land use is, is managed in the city of San Jose. But with that, coming into this meeting, I was already quite aware of the fact that there are many people, at least in my community, which then makes me think in your communities as well, colleagues, that there are people out there who aren't quite uh in tune with what's happening. Given the, to use your word, Michael, the monumental aspect of this item, it does seem to me that it is a bit rushed for us to approve this tonight. Uh, in my mind, you know, we've got about a hundred and seventy-six people for the next item. We should have equal or more for, for this item on its own and give it its own space, its own conversation because of the monumental aspect of it. So for me, it, it, it's, I, I like the conversation. I think it's everything we've talked about in terms of San Jose being a world-class city, largest city in the Bay Area, you know, leading the way. It's not a question of the substance as much as it is a question of the process in terms of getting our, our shareholders, the public, uh, to have the opportunity to not only understand it uh but also know how to navigate. I have a law degree. And I have to read these items four, five, six times sometimes to, to make sure I'm understanding uh what the comma means and the, and the twenty forty and the general plan. I think, I think it would be tremendously valuable, colleagues. I'm not going to make a motion yet because again, I want to open it up to you saying something, but I, I do, I do think it's important for us to give the public the opportunity to have much more thorough, deeper uh analysis of of what in fact is going to happen. Because again, it is a huge quote, huge monumental change for the city. And I agree. And huge monument, monumental changes uh require huge monumental efforts as far as outreach and and connectivity with the folks who are going to have to live with these policies long-term. Uh, tho- those are my com- Michael, I see that your hand is up. I'm, I'm going to get to you, but before I do that, with that as context, I will again set the, uh, set the floor and ask my colleagues on the commission uh if they have any comments on this item.
I'd like this. Just, Chair Bonilla.
Yes.
What, what do you envision being the downside or the negative impact of us approving this measure? And I understand it's monumental in that it streamlines the development of projects. What would be the downside?
I mean, for me, the downside, to be honest with you, is we, and this is part of, you know, we're a new group, we're all going to know each other. I think we have a question to ask ourselves. Are we going to, you know, just approve everything that comes our way, or are we going to be thoughtful, analyze, or we have the space? And really show the public as well that we are essentially doing the work that they are expecting us to do from an analysis standpoint. If at the end of this process, you all decide that this is the best thing in the history of San Jose, but we went through that process, we gave this thing a little bit more time, we understood what the outreach plan was. In my mind, that's the right way of doing things in terms of being able to look the public in the eye and say, hey, we did do our analysis, we did understand what was before us, we did take the time to read it, to understand it, and to make sure that you did as well. To just do it tonight, I would, I would argue respectfully. If I were to pull each one of you, I mean, do we really, do we really have a thorough enough understanding of what's before us tonight? That's one. And number two, does the public, and have they had that opportunity? That's not to minimize the work that you've done. Clearly, Brent and team, it's extensive work, not easy. But in my mind, this absolutely requires a higher level of outreach, which I've been pretty consistent on in terms of my lack of satisfaction on the subject matter, and I go back to Michael's words, it is a huge monumental change for the city. Commissioner Casey, in the corporate world, when you make huge monumental changes to the governing laws of your corporate structure, doesn't happen quickly. There is a process, a process that includes the right stakeholders. Similar concept here. Is, is that, do you have another question or comment? Commissioner Casey?
I believe Commissioner Torrance has a question.
Perfect. Commissioner Torrance. Oh, so actually, let me, let me get to Michael. He did, he did raise his hand, so I do want to be fair. Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of these. One, I just wanted to respond to the woman from Alum Rock from Aruva. I just want to make it clear that staff is not proposing to apply these zoning districts to Alum Rock. So there's not, so given, if, so if our proposal were to be carried forward, they would have no impact on the Alum Rock form base zoning area. That being said, we do, we met with you and we will continue to meet with you to get your perspective on that, because we're open to go either way, but at this time, we're not proposing to apply it to Alum Rock for the reasons that we shared with you, but we are all ears on that one, right? The other thing I want to mention is just that we outreach to thousands of people. Brent made even a YouTube video. We had community meetings and we've had a lot of conversations about this, so I think we feel we've done extensive outreach. Zoning is something that often puts people to sleep, so we understand that, you know, people may not have come who, just because it's complicated, it's a planning wonky thing. But we did really redo extensive outreach over a period of year on this. I also do want to mention, we do have a time constraint in getting this to council.
You know, Michael, I appreciate you saying that in terms of outreach. I mean, 2020 was a year like no other. I think now that the world's starting to open up again a little bit, now that people feel a little bit more confident. In my mind, again, it's not a substance issue, and I want to make it very clear, I'm not minimizing your efforts. I know they've been perhaps extensive, but I can't also ignore the fact that there are legitimate, you know, I've been doing this for 26 years. I know the difference between I didn't get it, I didn't get it, and I didn't get it. And I'm tied in. And in my mind, there are folks out there who have not had the opportunity today and would want to be a part of the process. And again, given the size of this, in my mind, it doesn't hurt for us to spend a little bit more time just giving folks the space. But I do appreciate your Alum Rock aspect. I do appreciate all the ears and the work with you that you've done, but let me, let me get to Commissioner Torrance for a second, and I get back to you.
I wasn't quite done. So let me just explain, there is a consequence of the planning commission not making a recommendation. There's a severe.
I'm totally, I'm totally okay with that. Thank you for that. Commissioner Torrance, Commissioner Torrance.
Okay.
I thought we were going to hear from Michael to answer that time-sensitive question.
No, I'm going to get to Commissioner Torrance, then we'll get to Michael. I've got a commission waiting. Commissioner Torrance.
Thank you, Chair. I'm unmuted. And so I, I feel, as I've listened to comment and I've read this previously and watched this coming through, I, I feel very comfortable with the work that has been done by Brent and his team. And, and I feel that this is needed, the conformance is needed with the general plan, and the boxes have been checked for me. The outreach, I feel, has been significant. And so I would feel very comfortable moving this through.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Olivero, you could please refrain as.
I believe she made a motion. I just wanted to second the motion.
That was, that was not a motion. She did not motion.
Commissioner, did she make a motion?
Commissioner Luigi, Councilor Olivero, can you please allow for me to run this meeting? We will, we will get to that. Back to Michael, thank you. We've known each other for some time, so my apologies for the first name part.
No worries. Yeah, no, please. No, yeah, so I just want to, I mean, I just want the commission to have the full understanding. So there is this law, SB 330, the Housing Accountability Act. And what that law has said is that cities cannot downzone or down general plan, either one, anywhere in the city unless at the same hearing they upzone or up general plan somewhere else, right? And so one of the issues that came to light when we experienced, when we discovered this law and it was being, it was being, it was approved, is that, and we even brought this up in the legislative process, is that we have a lot of properties around the city that don't conform with the general plan. And we need to bring them into conformance in general plan, and some of them means a downzoning, right? So you could have a single family neighbor that might be designated for higher density. The one that really came to mind is Coyote Valley. So thanks to City Manager Dutchham, and back in the 60s, he zoned wide swaths of the hillsides of San Jose and Coyote Valley to single family zoning districts. So because of that, and we got a lot of support from the open space advocates that are moving forward efforts in Coyote now. We, we actually sponsored a bill called SB 940, and the governor, it passed the legislature and the governor signed that bill. What that bill says is that San Jose, and only San Jose only in the whole state, that San Jose has flexibility to bank upzonings and then save those upzonings to apply them to downzonings later, to provide us more flexibility, for example, as we want to, we want to rezone property, for example, in the hillsides of East San Jose and Coyote Valley. Maybe there are industrial properties that have a residential zoning district, et cetera. So, right, so, so that gives us that flexibility, that one of the provisions is we can't use, we can't use those provisions until the council approves the zoning districts that we have tonight. And that was feedback that we got from, from, from a number of people, even the authors of the bill, so of the original 330. So what that means is, I just want to make it clear, I mean, you know, you're the commission, you can make your recommendation, but I just want you to be eyes wide open that we have some major rezonings and general plans amendments coming to council, namely Downtown West and, or D SAP and Downtown West. And that's thousands of units that we can bank to then go into Coyote and other places and start bringing those zonings into conformance with the general plan. And we are, and that's something we're planning to do. That's one of the reasons why we're coming to this hearing tonight, so we can take advantage of those upzonings. If the commission were to delay a decision, there is, that would not enable us to take advantage of those upzonings.
Thank you for that, Michael. I do appreciate the context. Commissioner Ordeno.
Thank you. So just on the issue of public outreach, I mean, I, I think there are quite a number of things where the city could do a better job on public outreach, but if staff is following the requirements they're requiring, required to follow, I have trouble justifying, pushing back and saying there wasn't enough outreach. And ultimately, it's a process question, and the process of how the city does public outreach, I don't think is in this commission's purview, and it's definitely not what we're discussing tonight. So, uh, yeah, I guess I'll just leave it there and say, also, I agree with Commissioner Torrance's comments earlier.
I'm going to go to Brent and Commissioner Torrance. Commissioner Torrance, just out of curiosity, are you preparing to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. So let me just finish with Brent, and then we'll get to that for sure. Brent, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, along the lines of public outreach, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, as Michael kind of mentioned earlier, zoning ordinance updates really do tend to put the public to sleep. And based on my experience at the city of San Jose, I've had ordinance updates, actually, the Phase 1A of this ordinance update, you know, we followed all of our protocols, and I believe it had like three people attend. And the outreach that we did for this phase of the work was five times as much, frankly. For the, for the meeting in November, we had 26 people. So that was an exponential increase. And then the follow-up, subsequent meeting in March, we had two on March 1st, we had 50, over 50 participants for each of those. So our outreach actually was far more successful than it had been in the past, and I feel like we've engaged more people than we have in the past, particularly with items like this that are dry and technical and abstract for people to understand. And also just wanted to mention too as well that we did make a real concerted effort to put as much of this information on the website as possible so that it was available to people at their leisure. So if they didn't get to make it to the meeting, they got to see the recording of the meeting. We also included translated versions of the PowerPoint presentations in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese on the website as well. So we did really try our hardest, I think, to, in the world of COVID, in the world of working from home and working remotely, to get the message out there to as many people as possible. And as I mentioned as well, I was regularly sending out updates to email groups of a thousand people. I actually discovered through the city that you can't send a message out to more than 500 people, so I had to split my emails up into two groups often. So I just wanted to put that out there, that public outreach was probably one of our strongest points, and I think the engagement with the public was one of the strongest I've had with this.
And Brent, and let me, let me just make one thing very clear. In no way am I seeking to demean the clearly monumental task, I mean, Michael's got me stuck on that word now, of the outreach that you've performed. I don't want you in any way to walk away thinking that I didn't think you did enough. I recognize, you did a lot in the middle of the pandemic. I run a company. If I don't ask the question of how we can do better, then we wouldn't be, we wouldn't grow. It's just something I have to do, particularly in my neighborhood that has historically, this is not planning specific, but historically, information has not flown, flowed, flowed our way at perhaps the rate that we would like. I do take offense to the fact that you do think planning is not exciting, totally exciting. I mean, we, we, this is what we, forget comedies, this is what we do. So thank you for your efforts, Michael, as well. I thank you, staff, for your work. Again, I'm asking about those extra steps, and maybe that wasn't possible, but within the context of something that you already did that was quite heavy, I do recognize that. So thank you for that. All right, Commissioner Ordeno, you had your hand up, but it's down. So with that, Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Garcia, not spoken, so definitely Commissioner Garcia, the floor is yours.
So, you know, I can't help but, you know, agree with your opinion, Vice Chair Bonilla, in the sense that I'm not saying there wasn't enough outreach, but given that this is making, in some cases, the exception the rule as opposed to the rule, you know, the exception. And the fact that it's, there was a mention of, you know, we bank densities to have lower densities in other places. Was that in the material, or why was that omitted from that, you know, the, from the, I missed that when I was reading, you know, the, the information that that was one of the motivations to bank, you know, to be able to get these other projects through, you know. It almost seems like it was an afterthought or an oversight, but it definitely seemed like it was an omission. Is that accurate, or is that just I missed it?
I can respond to that. I'm Martina Davis, supervising planner. Yeah, we do talk about it very briefly in the staff report. The staff report is pretty long, so, and I think it's only like a couple of sentences. The thing with the banking capacity issue is, is that's almost, it's like the tail on the dog, right? That's, that's sort of the tail on the dog. It is, it is kind of an afterthought in the sense that we will be rezoning the properties throughout the city regardless of when this ordinance passes, right? We are obligated and understated law to do it. That streamlining really just that banking really just helps facilitate the work that we're going to do, but it's not that we wouldn't do the work if we did not get the banking ability. We've got to do it anyway. It's just going to be much, much, much more difficult if we don't, aren't able to bank it. Hope that made sense.
Thank you for that. All right, with that, and I'm going to get to you, Commissioner Torrance, because I know you're in my motion there that's waiting. Is there any other comments? Okay, with that, then I will move to the motion portion of this conversation. Commissioner Torrance clearly wants to put a motion on the floor, so Commissioner Torrance, is it fair to assume you are submitting a motion to support?
I'm going to forget the words. I've had to wait so long. I'm going to forget how to do that, so.
All right.
I'd like to move, make a motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. The city attorney, the motion made by Torrance, second by Commissioner Olivero. Now we'll take a roll call vote. Torrance.
Aye.
Olivero.
Aye.
Lordanwa.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Casey.
Aye.
Bonilla, no. And with that, city attorney, the motion passes five to one. Caballero is absent, Bonilla being the lone dissenting vote. Okay. So wasn't that exciting? We're not even at the main event yet, so. So with that, staff, are we prepared to move forward?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, all right. So item seven, continued general plan hearing, cycle one, 2021. Am I correct in seeing there's nothing there? I think I'm having a.
That, that's correct. Chair Bonilla, yeah, there's nothing on the general plan consent calendar.
All right, perfect. So then seven and eight, we now move to item nine. General plan hearing. And I've got some more instructions for everyone I have to read out loud. Okay, item nine, general plan public hearing. Item A, GP 20-008 and C 21-001. Staff, please cue the video. Are we having technical difficulties?
Hola y bienvenidos a esta reunión. Para acceder a la función de interpretación, haga clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la ventana de zoom y seleccione el idioma que desea. Para escuchar claramente el audio de interpretación, le recomendamos que también seleccione la opción para silenciar el audio original, que es la opción más baja en el menú después de hacer clic en el icono del globo. Xin chào và cảm ơn quý vị đã tham dự buổi họp ngày hôm nay. Để truy cập vào phần thông dịch của ứng dụng Zoom, xin nhấn vào biểu tượng hình quả đi cầu ở phía dưới của màn hình và chọn ngôn ngữ theo ý muốn của quý vị. Để nghe rõ lời tuyên dịch, chúng tôi khuyến khích quý vị chọn chức năng tắt âm thanh gốc nằm ở phía cuối trong phần tùy chọn của biểu tượng quả đi cầu.
Này, cảm ơn bạn tham gia今天的会议. Nếu cần sử dụng Zoom的语言翻译,
Okay. Thank you for that. We can now move to staff presentation. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So good evening. Chair and commission members, my name is Charlotte Gonzalez. I am the stationary planning team lead for the city of Plan Innovation. I am also the planning project manager for the various of our urban village plan in the recent application of file PDC seventeen dash zero five one. That is consideration for you this evening. Very quickly, various of our urban village plan tells planning policies to guide development in an area of approximately two hundred seventy acres that is located in the north and central part of San Jose and this area contains the proposed rezoning. Very quickly, the rezoning, just to remind everyone, is a request for a planned development zoning to allow up to three thousand four hundred fifty dwelling units and up to three point four million square feet of commercial development. Official address is fifteen ninety on Berriosa Road. On the site is currently occupied by San Jose City Market and the corresponding parking areas. So at the March twenty four meeting, the planning commission continued that hearing on the items that, by the time of that agenda, items eight A and eight B, this, those items on this agenda are items nine, eight, and ninety. So those items again are for the adoption of the, of the plan, various of our urban village plan, associated general plan amendments, and also have recommendations for the approval of the free market south side rezoning. The commission also directed staff to return on this hearing of May twelfth and report on the feasibility of community benefits agreement potentially address the future displacement of free market vendors. So city staff has provided planning commission with a supplemental memorandum that has information about the nature, the process of community benefits agreement, and has also some discussion about development agreements. Memorandum also provides additional information on the existing land use entitlements currently on the site and the relationship between those entitlements and the proposed rezoning in regards to the San Jose City Market. The memorandum states that when the free market was first rezoning by city council in two thousand and seven, that rezoning was for the entire free market, including both the portions on the north side and south side of Berriosa. There is zoning allow up to I'm sorry.
Early.
I'm sorry.
Your slide.
Yes.
Are not projecting.
At this point, I'm just doing the verbal oral presentation, then we're gonna start doing the actual slides. So this is just the oral presentation, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, just as just the oral presentation for everyone, they're going to do an actual presentation. So the free market was rezoned, as I was saying, basically caused in two thousand and seven, and that was only for was with that entire free market area, including both portions of north side and south side of Berriosa Road. There is zoning allowed up to about approximately three thousand units and about six hundred sixty five thousand square feet of commercial development. That two thousand and seven rezoning did not plan for the rotation of the free market use on the property. It was anticipated that the build out of the site would occur over many years, allowing the free market to continue operation for some time. This memorandum also provides information on the educational event that was hosted by catalyzed Silicon Valley in April fifteen of this year to play between the March twenty four hearing and the hearing of this evening. So what we're going to do following next is actually a very quick presentation from city staff that basically reminds the planning commission of the specific recommendations from city staff. And then this is going to follow by a presentation of new information we have about a proposed urban market that this is being proposed by the applicant. And then we're going to come back to go back to questions from the public. So I'm going to share now, next, a presentation very quickly. Okay. So, okay, so on the screen. So the first item on the agenda is, again, the various of our urban village plan is item ninety. So very quickly, we had three star recommendations. The first one is related to sequoque clearance regarding the plan. The second recommendation is adopting a resolution that adopts a general plan amendment that basically allows for the plant capacities that allow the adoption of the plan. And the second part of that second recommendation is basically the adoption of the various of our village plan. The first recommendation is to approve a zoning ordinance in regards to approximately thirty acres that corresponds what we call the East District of various of our urban village plan. These are areas that basically are owned by BTA. The second item on the agenda, again, is the planned development zoning for the file PDC seventeen dash zero five one. This is item ninety on the agenda. Very quickly about our staff recommendation are four recommendations. So the first one is the adoption of the resolution certifying the EIR. This is basically the sequoque clearance for this project. The second one is the approval of the ordinance for this, for this project, allowing the, basically the capacities. And this rezoning, the third recommendation is regarding a specific chapter, title fourteen of San Jose municipal code. And this is in regards to the US one oh one Oakland Mayberry Traffic Impact Fee or Area Development Policy. And then the fourth one is basically adopting a resolution to have the amendment of the same policy. So very quickly, what we'd like to do is to summarize what happens between the last meeting and this meeting. So as I said before, there was a supplemental memorandum was prepared by city staff. This was sent to planning commission members, so it's in your packages. And then we have a new proposal by the applicant of approximately a five acre urban market that is located on the Bar Plaza and Central Park. And then there's going to be details discussed as part of that proposal, but basically there is a marginal reduction of commercial designated land. Then we know that this urban market is basically part of the one hundred fifty thousand square feet of ground floor retail that was evaluated as part of the EIR for the project. And what we know is that some minor modifications are needed for the PZ zoning and the various urban village plan to accommodate this proposed urban market. So additional comments that had been received after the March twenty four planning commission meeting, we know that we have some support letters, we have some position letters, and all of those things have been forwarded to you as part of the public correspondence. We also did an updated historic memorandum, we have an updated historic memo that basically goes over the historic aspect of the San Jose City Market. It's still eligible as a city and a state landmark. However, it does not changes the recommendations of, that we have originally. So I believe the applicant is in the line, so what we would like to do next is just to ask the applicant to do a presentation of what this proposed urban market solution looks like. So with that, I'm going to stop showing my screen.
Okay, so does that conclude staff presentation?
So the staff presentation is just, it concludes right now, that the additional presentation is going to be done by the applicant. That's just basically something that they are going to do for the planning commission.
Perfect. Because I know you mentioned that. Okay, so with that, we will now move to the applicant presentation. Yes, sir.
Point of order. I don't believe I saw slides presented. Am I, was I the only one? Neither did our commissioner. Yeah, Michael, I think you mentioned showing a slide deck.
Yeah, I think, well, I think Charlotte meant to, but it just didn't project, so. There weren't that many slides, though. There were a handful, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that the presentation covered the the bullet points that were on the slides. It was, it was fairly basic.
I'm satisfied with the oral presentation, colleagues, or you're okay with that, or is it critical for you to have the slides? I mean.
I can go quickly, if you guys want me to, again.
If you can, let's go, let's do that, then.
Yeah, since I apologize for that, maybe I didn't show my screen. I didn't show my screen correctly, so my apologies for that. Very quickly again, the first item on the agenda is the various of our urban village plans, so very quickly, there are three star recommendations. First of all, is it, everybody seeing my screen? Okay, good, goodness. So the first one is environmental transfer plan, second one is a resolution. There's two parts of the resolution. One is the plant capacity, basically how much housing, how much commercial development, and then the second part of that recommendation is the adoption of the plan. The third part of this. Excuse me?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing. We hear echo in the background. If everyone can turn off the microphone except for the presenter. Okay, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thanks. So the third recommendation, the third one is about an ordinary rezoning. This is a little bit related to the previous item, which is thought as basically the alignment of zoning and a general plan. This is specifically for what is called the East District of the plan. This is very specific area owned by BTA, but I'm going to read to all of this is the basically data line in between general plan and zoning. As I was saying before, the next item is the ninety, which is the actual zoning. Just very quickly, I was saying that there's four recommendations. First one is environmental currents, basically certifying the EIR with all the related measures related to that. The second one is to approve the ordinance. Basically, the file that we have this evening for your consideration and basically allow entitlements on the site. The third one is the approval of the ordinance repealing, what I was saying is in a specific chapter of title fourteen that talks about the area development policy for the US one oh one Oakland Mayberry. And that is specifically talks about traffic impact fees. So in order to move forward with this project, it was necessary to repeal that section and adopt a resolution, amend in the same section and chapter fourteen dot three zero. So what I was saying is that these are the project summary with projects updates. So between the last hearing and this hearing, what we have is a supplemental memorandum and I I, again, I did that explanation at the beginning of the presentation, saying exactly what the planning commission asked city staff and that is in your packages. And what we have an understanding is that the applicant has a proposal for a five acre urban market that is located in what is called the Bar Plaza in the central part. Basically, these are the central open space areas of the various of our urban village plan. So our understanding is that it's a marginal reduction of commercially designated land on the order of one point four acres. We also understand that that urban market could be analyzed or could be cleared on the sequoque on their one hundred fifty thousand square feet of ground floor commercial that was evaluated in the EIR. So what we understand on the proposal so far is there's minor modifications in the P zoning and the various of our urban village plan that would accommodate this urban market. We have additional comments that were received, as I was saying, between the last planning commission meeting and this planning commission meeting. So we think that those, those comments in all the correspondence was for to you. And finally, we have an updated historic memorandum. So we're seeing that the city staff updated this memorandum about the historic value of the San Jose City Market. It's still eligible as a city and a state landmark. And but to repeat again, it does not change the recommendations that we have originally as part of the EIR. So next will be the presentation from the applicant for the proposed urban market solution.
Charlotte, thank you for doing that twice. We now will have to be, to the applicants.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, if I could, if you'd allow me to share my screen, please. And also, can we confirm that Ken Rodriguez is also in the panel? I can't tell.
He is.
All right, Ken's here. Okay. Great. Well, can you see, can you see the screen?
No, we cannot.
I, let's see. I did. Hold one sec. For some reason, it's not working. One second.
Hi Eric, do you see the green share screen button on the bottom?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm watching that.
You email it maybe to Jennifer? I don't know.
Trying to share just the application or your entire desktop?
I'm trying to share anything. I can't. You're telling me it's not showing up.
I have the information here. If you want me to, I can probably have the same file, so it's up to you. I could do that on your behalf. You just let me know.
Yeah, email it to Jennifer, Charlotte, that'd be great.
What I'm saying is, Chair, that I actually can share that information directly from my last, from my desktop, if that's okay.
I think that's not really a good option.
Okay, you want to share that? That sounds good.
Can someone give me some guidance on what we might do here?
I can share. Do you want to email it to me, Eric?
Well, we have multiple files here.
So I don't, you know, what we can do, can we call recess to give him time to reset himself? Five minutes, just that way, we're not all putting the pressure on you. And I mean, it's the world is a zoon, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, that's fine by us.
Colleagues, are we okay with five minute recess?
Sure.
All right, sure. So Jennifer Provador, if you could stay on.
Yeah, yes, I'll stay on.
All right, so we will be back in five minutes, see?
Okay, so.
We've had general community outreach pre-COVID, so there was face-to-face communication and meetings as well as virtual meetings, webinars during COVID. And we've conducted special vendor outreach that also was in person all of the times listed on this meeting. When we met with commission back in March, the commission requested that we take the time to have another discussion with the interested vendors. So on April 16th, we met with the representatives of the vendor association and a couple of other vendors to get their input. And the number one item on their list of priorities was to provide land and commercial square footage to include plans for a recreated market on the site. And so we asked our design team, our architect and our, our engineers to look at the ability to incorporate an urban market into the plan. So now I'm going to ask Ken Rodriguez to go through the slides to share with you the vision of what we're trying to create. An urban market that is common all over in great cities all over the world and the details of how it would lay out in the new urban neighborhood that we're trying to create. Ken?
Thank you, Eric. Chair Bonilla, members of planning commission. My name is Ken Rodriguez. I'm a local architect and have been working for the Bum family with Eric for many years on this project. Excited, very excited to bring before you a concept that, you know, came about from the last planning commission meeting. So we thank you for, and members of commission, members of the public for all their good input. We did some research on some really exciting spaces that are built with great buildings that surround what could be a new envisioned marketplace. These are just some images that we have selected from spots in the world. You obviously can see pieces that you know probably or maybe have visited. Certainly, the one in the upper left-hand corner with the Eiffel Tower in the background is a very interesting space, as are many of these. So let's go to the next slide, Eric, and just look at them at larger scale. The, the one thing that, that I think is unique about all of these is they typically have buildings that surround what is a exciting and, and people-friendly and vibrant public market space. And whether it's, it's colorful images of, of those spaces, whether it's open structure elements, what it, what they all show is the ability to have merchandise like the current flea market out for the public to view and, and stroll and, and decide to make purchases. So let's go to the next slide. Again, here you can see really interesting urban buildings that surround big public squares. Many of them now have been activated in a much greater way by the, the urban market. And we think that that's an opportunity here at our, our new envisioned Berryessa Urban Village. So let's go to the next slide. What we did was, as Charlotte mentioned, we looked at adding a new public market shown in the red items that is sort of at the center hub of this beautiful development that, that we've all been working on for many years here, adjacent to the Bart Station in what, what we call the Bart Plaza. And then at the center park area or Romulus area in the center of the project. What I might remind everybody with Eric's help with the cursor is it's not just this five acres of area for public market, but it also is the brick and mortar opportunities for many of these vendors at the base of the, of these buildings in the retail components. So when you look at how that frames the, the city public streets, it creates a very interesting walkable public space. And so all of those areas that Eric is now showing with the cursor are envisioned to be ground floor, brick and mortar spaces. So vendors that are currently out at the flea market would not only enjoy this five acres, they would have, actually, when you add the square footage of those spaces below the building and then even the possibility of closing down the, some of the streets, especially here as he's showing around the park or Romulus. When you close those down on the weekends, you actually get as much area as the current flea market. And that, I think, is the exciting message. It's not just a five acre proposal. It actually is a much more significant proposal. Let's go to the next slide. Here you can see some urban massing of how that might occur. As you know, our project, our zoning is before you, and it's an up to 3.4 million square feet, 3450 residential units, but shown in red could be this beautiful activated urban area, as I pointed out, that occur on some of the slides that I previously have shown. The other thing that I think is very interesting is how the, the public can arrive by bard at the Bart Station, come out the two Bart entrances onto our property and then have this beautiful walking environment and, and Mercado environment that I think will work hand in hand with, with not only the buildings, but also the Bart Station. Let's go to the next slide. And so this is some hypothetical, they're conceptual only elevations of potential buildings. We selected these building heights because again, it's up to. But what it does is it gives you an idea of the elevated Bart Station on the upper drawing to the left and how people would walk below the Bart Station and directly into this new, new market space. The, the introduction of canopies that could be interestingly lit at night as well as in the daytime to provide some shade and also some cover. And then multiple color, very interesting vendor stations that could be set up below those. I think this really gives you a really good sense of scale and how this could be an extremely exciting marketplace that would be very active on, on all the days of the week. If you look at the slide below, you can see the tinsel structure and we've stripped away the public market. So you can see also the storefronts that align the Romulus slash park and Bart Plaza. And you could envision those being vendor areas, retail, a sales areas, restaurants, outdoor seating, outdoor sales, just a variety of great opportunities. Much like you would see in a, in a street fair in, in an urban, in an urban city. So I think with that, I'd like to turn it back to Eric to continue the presentation for questions.
Yeah, I just want to close with parking because people always ask, well, where are people going to park? And I think this diagram gives you the best image of how that would happen. First of all, the Bart parking garage with over 1,200 parking spots, seven stories tall is right here. It exists today. And on the weekends, it will likely be very empty. So it's a perfect opportunity to use it at peak times. In addition, our commercial office buildings will have parking garages. These gray areas are parking garages. And so on the weekends, when the offices typically aren't being used and the parking garages aren't being used, we would hope for an arrangement to allow a public parking in these garage structures. So it's a great shared use opportunity with the Bart Station and the commercial development. With that, I think we're ready to hear any questions that the commission might have about this new proposal. And if you think it's worthy, we hope that any motion made would clearly state that the urban village plan should include the allowance for a permanent urban market within the new neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, so as we prepare for public comment, Jennifer, do we have a sense of how many hands we already have up for public comment?
They keep rising, but as of right now, we're at 23.
Twenty-three. And they're gonna, and they're gonna continue to rise. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna limit public comment to one minute. Public comment will be two minutes for those that need translation, one for the initial comments and language, the second for the translator. So we're also gonna break it down into three groups. We're gonna break it down into those any translation for, for Chinese, those that need translation for Vietnamese and those that need translation for Spanish. So with that, can we begin public comment by asking those of you that need translation in Chinese? Can you please raise your hand right now? Jennifer, how many hands?
There is 12 here, but I'm not sure if everyone here needs Chinese.
So let me, let me, let me repeat again. If you need, if you are speaking Chinese and need interpretation, raise your hand, only if you're speaking in Chinese. How many hands we have now?
We have seven hands.
Okay, so let's begin there. When you're done, from the translation standpoint, let me know so that I can then call the next group. So with that, let us begin public comment.
Okay, June, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
See. Can you hear me?
Yes, do you need Chinese translation?
No, I guess the English. Okay.
Do we want to wait?
Let, let's wait for, for, for you to speak with everyone else. Right now, it's only people who need Chinese to English translation. So.
Okay. LF? You are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
You are unmuted. Please, please begin to speak.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, so you'll be translating LF's comments in English. So LF would say a few words and then you translate that back to this group in English.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Since I have meeting at nine, so I need to leave early, so I will, I will use Chinese. Oh, then I can, I can speak in English. So bar is a public transportation that could significantly relieve the pressure of the traffic and environment. Last week, I take it bar, I took it barred and I realized most, almost no one is taking bar now. I know it's the pandemic, but still the capacity at bar, Berryessa Bar Station is much less than other bar station. Then what's the point of building bar station without urban village? Few people will take advantage of the public transportation without urban, urban village. The urban village could offer many job opportunities due to many office building built. More and more, more and more people could take bar to work and less people will drive. In this way, our environment could be better and better and more energy will be saved. So at the same time, we won't with the public transportation resources and taxpayers' money. And for the flea market now, we only, it only open two to three days out of seven days, seven days.
Sorry, your time is up. And I believe this is only for people who need Chinese translation.
Correct. This is only, only for people who need Chinese translation.
Monica?
Yes.
Again, so you're not translating in Chinese right now. So the Chinese speakers, you're gonna translate them in English when they say their comments. So you're on the main channel right now. So once the public comment is said in Chinese, you're gonna translate it in English.
Got it. Sorry, I don't know. I mean, the main channel.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay, Decolonial Action Lab, do you need Chinese translation right now? If so, please go ahead with your comment.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna go to Isabel.
Yeah.
Isabel, you are unmuted. Do you need Chinese translation?
Yes, can anybody hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 好，我就想针对我们小区这附近的两个公园发表一下意见，一个是Mercado Park，还有一个是Reunion Park。所以还是希望能够。
Okay, Isabel, your time is up. Monica, if you could translate?
Yes, so when I moved to this community like three or four years ago, we were told the other plan was, they promised was this general plan. But we waited for this long, nothing happened. For the flea market, they only open three to four days, you know, not fully occupied. And we don't feel the surrounding the community is safety anymore. And we can see sevices homeless surrounding, and the home is a lost package. So we really hope the commissioner could passing the motion and let push the construction going through. That's all.
Thank you, Monica. I believe that is all we have for Chinese translation.
Okay, so are you prepared now to transition to Vietnamese translation, Jennifer? Or Danielle?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so now, can we get a show of hands for folks that will speak in Vietnamese and need translation? Vietnamese speakers. How many hands do we have up?
We have three.
Okay, perfect. So we can begin.
Okay, June, you are unmuted. Did you need Vietnamese translation?
Hi, Min. Just wanted to repeat. So now that we're doing the Vietnamese public comments, so we need a translator. Then you're on the main channel, so you translate their comments in English. So you don't have to translate at this moment until we have a public comment. Thank you, Min.
Okay, so we are speaking English. Is this fine?
Right now, we're doing Vietnamese translation.
Okay.
Louise, do you need Vietnamese translation? You are unmuted. Louise?
Okay, let's move forward. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I guess we don't need any.
Okay, that's fine. And now, are we prepared for Spanish translation?
Yes, so Rich, we're moving you to the main channel again. So you're just gonna translate any Spanish comments to English on the main channel?
I'm sorry, Sylvia, the one that's in the Spanish channel.
Okay, Sylvia, sorry, you're in the main channel right now. So Sylvia, sorry about that. So Sylvia, you're gonna translate any of the Spanish comments to English. You're on the main channel right now.
Thank you.
Okay, Daniela, you are unmuted.
Daniela, 你正在沉默，但你可以说话，你需要翻译西班牙语和英语。
Hello, muchas gracias. 你想要了解拉丁文化。这些思想，哇哦！
This is beautiful. Do you show it as it is, like a cartoon show or something like that? But how much is gonna be the rent and to park there? It looks beautiful, but I wanna know the price.
为什么他们总是撒谎？ 他们要卖多少天？
This is a lie because this is not gonna be sufficient for the vendors. How many days? Go ahead. Sí, señora. How many days a week?
我们为什么要删除这个？
I wanna say thank you to Commissioner Garcia because he's the only one who has the pants to have votes for the Latinos. I don't understand why they wanna bring European culture into here because we have such a beautiful Latin culture. It's beautiful.
Okay, sorry, the time is up. Susana, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Susana, 你正在沉默，请开始说话。My name is Susana, and I've worked in the flea market for five years in a site with cultural artists. This is the job that I've done, that it helped me to take my daughter to the university, and there are about 25 families that are depending on this job. In an article published, the representative of the flea market says that possibly there will be a resoning of about five acres. Why are you saying five acres? It was less than that.
我的问题现在是，这些 acre 是不是对于销售的考虑，
My question is, are you considering those places for the vendors that are now working on it? Or you are bringing provisional vendors for only those two days of the week?
Next speaker.
David, you are unmuted.
David, 你正在沉默，但你可以说话。
你好，大家好。谢谢你给我提供了这句话。那让我们打开了很多门。
Thank you very much. Good evening to everybody. I've worked in this field since the 90s, and it's been an opportunity for me to develop new opportunities and to meet other people that gives us an opportunity to do something better.
最让我担心的是， 对于拉夫尔的主人来说无所谓，
What worries me, it's okay that you're trying to do. I don't oppose to this proposal, but you have to look at the people and the families that are there and they're paying their rent month by month. The owners of this flea market, they don't care if it's closed or open during the weekend. These people have been paying their rent for generations. It rains or it's closed, they pay it. I just wanna make sure that these people are gonna be taken care of.
Thank you. Next, we have Nubia. And I just wanna remind everyone, you have one minute. So try to stay within that. I don't want to have to cut anyone off.
请保持沉默。Nubia，你现在可以说话吗？
我在听？
Can you hear me? 是，先生。
Okay. 我想说的是， 过了12年，我被拉入了Flea Market， 而且没有足够的空间给所有人。那么，如何做到这一点？
It's been about 12 years that I had the opportunity to be in the flea market. And I was introduced to this by very good people. Flea market in these 12 years has been a very prosperous business for me. I've liked and seen a lot of people, and flea market is the heart of the Hispanic culture. And this project is leaving only a small space for people that have worked in this place. We are about 700 vendors. And what's gonna happen to the people that are not gonna be able to have a space that are being here for such a long time?
Next speaker.
The próximo speaker.
Manuel, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
我的名字是Manuel Rivera。我们有很多人， 因为我们需要这个， 我觉得这很糟糕，
My name is Emilio Rivera. I've been helping, I started helping my sister since the 78th. It's been for more than 30 years. We are people that are here to help our children to be better and not to go through what we are going through. Too many people depends on this place, on what they're doing in the flea market. And now the space is gonna be too small. What's gonna happen to the people that depends on this, that have been here for generations?
Okay, Ming, do you need Spanish translation?
Actually, I don't. I don't. I'm fine.
Okay, I'll wait to...
Yeah. Any more Spanish translation needed?
I think Richard is about to go in. If you would, please, Richard, for the Spanish translation.
Give us one second to move you, Sylvia, back in the room and Rich out in the main channel. Oh, Rich, are you out here now?
I am now in the rain room.
Great, thank you.
Are you there? Hello?
We are, you need Spanish translate? Oh, yeah, Richard.
I'm right here.
Yeah, we're...
I'm just waiting for the person. Yeah, you can talk.
Okay, next we have Kayatano. You are unmuted. You can unmute yourself. Hello?
Bueno?
Okay, I'll go back to him. Roman, you are unmuted.
Roman, you've already moved.
你好，我的名字是Roman。我是拉夫尔的商人。拉夫尔的圣母节很著名。很多人来自其他国家。其他州。有很多东西， 这些他们正在计划的东西，不，不，不，不实用。我们多次欺骗了你。在拉夫尔，应该有很多人。等等，你们不能卖掉， 会有很多人，看看这个和那个。现在他们想拿走我们。这不是公平的。他们正在计划的是... Eso que ellos están planeando es de, es, no, no nos va a servir, no sirve. Nosotros ocupamos algo así como está ahorita, que viene mucha gente de fuera, se vienen a distraer, a conocer, hay muchos eventos.
Sorry Roman, to cut you off there, we need time for the translation.
Disculpe de tener que cortar esto corto pero tenemos que tener una oportunidad para traducir esto, para interpretar esto, disculpe. Y mi nombre es, buenas noches, mi nombre es Roman, yo soy uno de los vendedores de la pulga de San.
Rich, Rich, any English, any English.
Oh, so sorry, you're right. Good. Good evening, my name is Roman, I'm a vendor at the San Jose flea market and we have people from other states that come here and we have people that, you know, plan to come work for us or we have people from other states and other countries and we have handcrafted works from Peru here and what I want you to know is that this plan that you have for us is just not gonna work. It doesn't work for us. They told us before, hey, you know what, we're gonna have a train station coming through there. Just, you know, go ahead and hold off and hold off and just, you know, just wait a little longer and then now they want us to, you know, to go somewhere else, they just wanna kick us out and that plan that they have just doesn't work, it's not gonna work for us.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to Kayetano. Can you unmute yourself, you are unmuted.
Se puede desenmudar?
Ah, está bien.
That's fine.
Okay, perdón, es que le había movido mal. Bueno, mi nombre es Kayetano, soy de la asociación Berrillesa Flea Market Vendor. Nada más quería hacer mi comentario, también tengo yo veinticinco años vendiendo la flea market. Mis hijos graduaron de la high school con los de mi trabajo. Ahora como están, lo que nos quiere dar la pulga es muy poco porque son puras mentiras los que están diciendo que los cinco acres habían dicho que tres puntos cinco acres iban a dar y ahora dicen que son cinco. Está mal todo eso que están ellos promoviendo y la flea market es un sitio de esparcimiento para todas las familias y la gente no quiere que cierren. Y otro comentario del señor Eric, representante, nuestros representantes no son niños de la calle, son universitarios. Los dos terminaron la universidad y otros dos siguen estudiando en la universidad. Así es que no los traten de delincuentes, ni los vuelvan a sacar así de la flea market. Okay, porque ellos le dieron el permiso, es todo, muchas gracias.
So forgive me, my name is Kayetano. I'm a flea market vendor. I've been twenty-five years selling there at the flea market and my children were able to graduate high school due to my work. And what they're telling us are lies. At first they had said that there was gonna be six point five acres and now it's five acres. So everything they're telling us, you know, they say, everything they're telling us is wrong. And as far as our reps, the people that are representing us, like Eric for example, these are college grads, you know, and you should treat them like, you know, our representatives and not treat them like criminals. Like by kicking them out like they didn't.
Okay, Luis. Luis, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Sí, buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Luis. Nomás quiero decirle pues que como estaban diciendo que eran de tres puntos cinco y ahorita dicen cinco y aunque fueran diez acres no serían suficiente para toda la gente que está ahí. La segunda cosa es que todos los que estamos ahí pagamos renta, pagamos taxes y por eso todos tenemos que, bueno, el lugar que nos dan es demasiado, muy poco para todos los que estamos ahí. En la otra parte es que hay gente que nos están, no hay mucha gente acá ahora porque nos están intimidando porque ellas si se dan cuenta sacaron a los líderes de donde estamos nosotros la pulga ahí, entonces por eso vemos muy pocas personas acá y acerca de los hombres, los hombres, la flea market no trae, no invita así, digamos que jala hombres de afuera. No, los hombres si se dan cuenta, hay donde sea incluso San Francisco, la misión de todos lados. Entonces la flea market no es así donde más que todos llegan los hombres, eso es mentiras, muchas gracias.
We need time for the translation, go ahead, Rich.
Disculpe Luis, necesitamos tiempo para poder interpretar. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Luis y quiero decir que lo que han dicho que nos van a dar tres puntos cinco acres. Oh, I wanna tell y'all that you were giving us three point five acres, then it was supposed to be five acres. I should really be ten acres because it's not enough for everybody that we have out there. And what you have to take into consideration is everybody there pays rent. Everybody that pays rent also pays taxes and everything that you're allowing for us is very little for everybody that's out there. Also, we don't have many people out there now. They got rid of our leaders, they kicked them out. And then what they were telling y all, what they were talking about was lies about the homeless, that the homeless coming out there and the homeless get there because of the mission that's close by. We don't have homeless there.
Okay, Anna, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Anna, se puede desenmudar?
Sí. ¿Me escucha?
Can you hear me? Sí.
Sí, me escucha. Sí, mi nombre es Anna Calderón y mi esposo y yo tenemos treinta años de vender en la pulga y si lo que están haciendo no es justo porque necesitamos más espacios. Cinco acres como están diciendo ellos no es lo justo. Yo pertenezco a la asociación de vendedores de la flea market y tampoco estoy de acuerdo con lo que hicieron con los líderes de la asociación, no es correcto lo que la pulga hizo. Y también nos mienten mucho porque la reunión es, la última reunión que hicieron la hicieron el día domingo. Nosotros no podemos dejar nuestro puesto solo para ir a una reunión entonces no, no, no es, no es lo correcto. Y sí me parece que es muy poquito el espacio que nos están dejando a nosotros los vendedores porque somos setecientos cincuenta y no sé qué va a pasar con los demás o a cuántos van a permitirnos, muchas gracias.
And good evening, yes, my name is Anna Calderón. My husband and I have been selling for thirty years there and what you are doing is not fair, we're gonna need more space. Five acres is not fair, is not enough space. The flea market association, I'm part of it. And the flea market association, what you did is not right, kicking out all the leaders and also having the meetings on Sunday, that's not, that doesn't work for us either because I mean, why would you have a meeting on Sunday, we are unable to attend them. So the, just to tell you that we're giving us too little space and there's seven hundred and fifty of us, I mean, how many of us are you gonna keep? How many of us are you gonna help? What's gonna happen to everybody else?
Thank you. Claudia, you are unmuted.
Claudia, está desenmudada.
Is that me? Okay, hi, I am calling because I have.
We're doing Spanish right now, we're gonna have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I thought it was everybody, go ahead then.
Okay, Walter, you are unmuted, you need Spanish translation.
Si se puede desenmudar usted.
Hi Walter.
Señor Walter. Don Walter, hay un icono de micrófono, si lo puede presionar. Desenmudar.
Okay, I'm gonna move on.
Vamos a proceder.
Lydia, you are unmuted.
Lydia, está desenmudada.
Please unmute yourself.
Por favor, desenmúdese.
Hi Lydia, you could unmute yourself.
Sí, me escucha.
Oye, sí, ya la escuchamos. Yes, we can unmute her.
Okay, buenas noches, mi nombre es Lydia Landa. Nomás, lo único que les puedo pedir es que se tienten el corazón un poco y que piensen a cómo está la situación ahorita y que piensen en todas las familias que van a dejar sin empleos y que ese espacio que quieras dar es demasiado, demasiado poco y que piensen por favor en todas las familias que quieren dejar así nada más al intrepedy, es todo, gracias.
Well, good evening, my name is Lydia Landa and I'd ask you to feel with your heart for a little bit over what's going on with everybody and I'll take into consideration the situation that we are in now and how many families are gonna be unemployed based on what we decided. So please think about all the families that you're gonna be affecting and everything that you're gonna be doing, thank you.
Next speaker.
El próximo orador.
Sorry, I was unmuted, Jose, you are unmuted.
Hey, how you doing, do you hear me?
Yeah, we're only taking folks that need Spanish translation right now, Jose. So we'll get to you when it's in English.
Okay, Mario, you are unmuted, go ahead and mute yourself.
Ya se puede desenmudar.
Okay, Mario Dávila. Buenas noches.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, buenas noches, mi nombre es Mario Dávila, soy vendedor en el flea market. Me dedico a la compra y venta de artículos deportivos específicamente en fútbol, soccer desde el 2010. Agradecido por el flea market que me ha permitido trabajar interrumpidamente y desarrollarme personalmente y ayudar a mi familia y mi país. Estoy preocupado por el anuncio de desplazamiento de nosotros que somos unos setecientos vendedores y ver con incertidumbre en nuestro futuro. Pedimos a los involucrados que nos tomen en cuenta en el proyecto de desarrollo de este lugar el cual considero es por muchos años un lugar de esparcimiento de la comunidad local, vecinos, otros estados y países del mundo que gustan conocer y hacer sus compras con nosotros, gracias.
Good evening, my name is Mario Dávila. I've been a vendor at the San Jose flea market for many years. I've been selling sports equipment specifically soccer since 2010 and it's helped me to grow my family and develop. And we've just got notified about the fact that we're being displaced which is causing us to have an uncertain future. And so what we want you to take into consideration is the fact that there's a lot of neighbors, a lot of people that come in from out of town to come see what we have to offer. There's a lot of local communities and others that you are gonna be affecting. I just wanna really, I want you to take it all that into consideration.
Thank you, I'm gonna try Walter again, Walter.
Walter, de nuevo, Walter.
Sí, buenas, mi nombre es Walter, nada más soy vendedor de la flea market por más de veintiséis años trabajando ahí en la flea market nada más pidiéndole a la comunidad de la planeamiento de la ciudad que reconsidere este planeamiento y que se ponga en nuestros zapatos de la forma en que están llevando este proceso, de que deben de darnos la oportunidad a la persona más necesitada ya que San José es una ciudad que está creciendo a pasos agigantados y solamente están viendo sus partes económicas en el aspecto de la gente que tiene dinero no de la gente que tiene necesidad, de la gente que viene desde abajo con luchar y luchar y pagando nuestros impuestos. Estamos tratando de pedirle a todas las comunidades que nos apoyen y a la ciudad en personalmente, a la ciudad de San José la que está involucrada en este planeamiento que no tenga esa oportunidad, que no nos vayan a desplazar ya que tenemos mucho, muchos años trabajando ya que de nosotros dependen muchas familias, tenemos también responsabilidades grandes como prestamos.
We need time for Rich to translate, Rich, go ahead.
Disculpe tener que pararlo pero hay que interpretar. Good evening, my name is Walter. I've been a vendor at the flea market for twenty-six years, we've been working there and what I wanna do is I wanna ask the planning commission to reconsider what they're doing. Put yourselves in our shoes while you're going through this process. Give us the opportunity, you know, that there's people here that are seeing giant growth in San Jose and the giant growth is only for the people that have money, not for the people that are there that are most needed. I want you guys to give opportunity to the most needed. Also, I'm asking for the community to support us, we do not wanna get displaced. So, you know, we've been working here for many years and there's so many families that you're affecting.
Thank you.
Before we go forward, Jen, really quickly.
You are unmuted, go ahead and mute yourself.
Se puede desenmudar, por favor.
Okay, I'm gonna move on from Q.
How many more do we have, Jen?
Five.
Five, okay.
Two of these actually do not need translation. Benjamin, go ahead, you are unmuted.
Benjamin, está desenmudado.
Benjamin, you are unmuted.
Benjamin, está desenmudado, se puede desenmudar, por favor.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the next.
Vamos a pasar al próximo orador.
Maria, you are unmuted, go ahead and mute yourself.
Maria, está desenmudada, si se puede desenmudar.
Escucha.
Se cortó la llamada.
Hi Maria, it looks like you got unmuted or muted again, if you could, okay, there you go.
Maria, parece ser que se mudó y se mudó de nuevo, desenmúdese.
¿Me escuchan?
Sí.
Ah, okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es María Cepeda, soy trabajadora de ahí de la flea market de la Berrillesa por doce años más o menos. Quisiera hacer un comentario que no estamos de acuerdo con esto porque nosotros somos personas mayores de edad que por nuestra situación no tenemos posibilidades de trabajar ya en otros empleos o nuestra condición en cuestión de salud. Ahí es un lugar donde podemos trabajar sin sentirnos presionados y aparte también de nuestro negocio dependen otras seis personas, son jóvenes a los cuales se les da trabajo. El espacio que nos están dando es muy pequeño, nos están pintando unas capas de colores muy brillantes para hacernos sentir atractivo pero en realidad eso no nos sirve a nosotros. Quisiera que nos pudieran ayudar, en realidad que tomen conciencia de la situación, gracias.
Good evening, my name is María Cepeda. I've been a worker working at the flea market for twelve years and I wanna make a comment that we do not agree with any of this. We are of an older age and we cannot just work anywhere we'd like due to our health conditions. Also, we can work there without feeling pressured and so what I want you to do is I want you to take into consideration everything that you're doing because you were making it sound very attractive and making it a pretty, it's a pretty picture but what I really need you to do is really help us, that's all I want, I wanna say, I want you guys to help us.
Next speaker.
El próximo orador, por favor.
Alberto, you are unmuted, go ahead and mute yourself.
Se puede desenmudar.
Sí, buenas noches, mi nombre es Alberto y he sido vendedor ya por segunda generación. Mis padres han estado en la flea market vendiendo cerca ya casi treinta años. Ahora soy yo la persona que está retomando el negocio y pues me soy también miembro de la asociación de vendedores de la flea market. de vendedores de la free market y ahora exigimos, por favor, ser escuchados. Hemos pagado nuestras rentas en la free market, han sido hasta de 1500 dólares mensuales. La hemos pagado sin ningún problema. Hemos pagado nuestros impuestos. Ahora, por favor, necesitamos que todos los vendedores se han tomado en cuenta, no solamente unos pocos. Hay gente ahí que realmente necesita el trabajo. No hay otra manera de ganarse la vida. Por favor, tengan la consideración de estas familias que necesitan el trabajo. Se los pedimos y aparte segundo estoy muy en cuento de.
Lo siento por interrumpirlo, Alberto. Necesitamos tiempo para que Rich traduzca. Adelante, Rich.
Disculpe, Alberto, pero tenemos que interpretar. Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alberto y yo soy parte de.
En inglés, en inglés. Lo disculpo.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Albert y soy un vendedor de segunda generación en el free market. Mis padres han estado allí durante más de 20 años y ahora soy el que está en cargo de ser vendedor allí. También soy parte de la asociación y lo que realmente queremos es que la demanda sea oída. Hemos pagado alquiler allí durante tantos años, alquiler que va desde $1,500, sí, $1,500 al mes sin problema. Hemos pagado, también hemos pagado nuestros impuestos. Y aparte de nuestros impuestos, lo que queremos que hagan es tomar en consideración a todas aquellas personas que necesitan trabajar que no tienen otra manera de ganar una vida. Y quiero que consideren todas las familias que están afectadas.
Okey, Lucy, usted está inmudado. Adelante, inmutarse.
Lucy, ¿está desenmudada? Por favor, desenmúrese.
Lo siento.
All right. Mike, ¿necesita traducción? Mike, usted está inmudado.
Okey, podemos proseguir.
Creo que, oh, espera, Brenda. Usted está inmudado. Adelante, inmutarse.
Brenda, ¿está desenmudada? Continua desenmúrese.
Es para inglés. Lo siento, pensaba que iba a pasar a inglés, así que puedo esperar.
Gracias. Okey, así que déjame asegurarme una vez más. ¿Son todos los speakes españoles que quieren tener comentarios públicos? ¿Tienen las manos levantadas, Jennifer?
Parece que Letizia levantó su mano. ¿Necesita traducción?
Sí, no importa. Mi nombre es María Díaz. Tengo 18 años trabajando en la free market. Habemos muchísimas personas que pertenecen, que dependemos de ese trabajo, que ya estamos enfermas mayores de edad y deberían de tomarnos en cuenta de que ya no vamos a poder agarrar trabajo en cualquier compañía. Entonces deberían de tomarnos en cuenta, tener consideración de todas las personas adultas que estamos trabajando en la free market. Por favor, ojalá que nos puedan ayudar de alguna manera. Muchísimas gracias.
Okey.
Mi nombre es María Díaz. He estado trabajando, he sido vendedor allí durante 18 años en el free market. Usted sabe, somos todos de mayor edad, algunos de nosotros están enfermos y realmente necesitamos que tomen en cuenta eso porque no podemos ir a trabajar en ninguna otra empresa. Somos todos adultos y solo les pedimos que por favor nos tomen en consideración y piensen en ello.
All right, Jennifer, ¿es eso todo?
Creo que sí. Daniel levantó su mano. Daniel, ¿necesita traducción? Daniel, usted está inmudado.
Daniel, ¿está desenmudado? ¿Se puede desenmudar?
Sí, ¿ya me escuchan?
Sí, sí.
Okey, mire, yo trabajo ahí también en la free market. Yo vendo cosméticos, productos de parabelesa. Yo lo que veo que no están tomando en consideración que el free market es un lugar histórico ya para California y es como quererle quitar a la cultura a California porque es histórico, la pulga ya es histórico, son muchos años ya y es como querer borrar algo del mapa. Entonces, aparte que están dañando mucho la economía de mucha gente y futuras generaciones porque ahorita ya hay niños que llegan con sus abuelitos o sus papás que están trabajando, gente que tiene incapacidades, que solo de ahí sobreviven. Yo tengo un amigo que es Lino, también él sufrió una amputación de la pierna izquierda y derecha y la mano derecha.
Lo siento, creo que el tiempo está acabado. Rich, ¿puede ir adelante y traducir?
Sí, trabajo en el free market. He estado vendiendo cosméticos y productos de belleza durante mucho tiempo y lo que ustedes no están haciendo, no están tomando en consideración el hecho de que el free market es un lugar histórico para California y es como si estuvieran quitando la cultura. Es un lugar histórico y lo que están haciendo es básicamente eliminarlo del mapa, eliminar la cultura del mapa también. Y también están dañando la economía de muchas personas que tienen hijos que solo comenzaron a trabajar para ellos, que tienen otras personas que tratan de trabajar para ellos. Incluso tenemos personas con discapacidad que sobreviven de ello. Por ejemplo, tengo uno de mis amigos, su nombre es Lino y es un amputado.
Rich, creo que está inmudo.
Estoy inmudo porque terminé, exactamente donde se detuvo, lo siento.
Lo siento, usted está inmudo.
Jennifer, eso es todo para traducción española, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Okey, así que con eso ahora vamos a pasar al comentario público general. Tienen un minuto. Pueden seguir adelante, comenzando a hacer testimonios públicos, Jennifer.
Okey, y sé que el reloj aquí dice dos minutos, pero pueden tener en cuenta que es un minuto. No quiero tener que cortar a nadie. Así que Jen, adelante y comience su comentario. Usted está inmudo.
Sí, sí, ¿me escuchas? Sí. Así que creo que desde una perspectiva personal y también como miembro del Ayuntamiento de Apec Sporiaza HOI, que tiene 200 residentes, me gustaría compartir dos cosas. Una es, quiero decir, la aplicación del plan de desarrollo es genial, pero eso es lo que me gustaría ver y también los residentes cercanos. Me gustaría ver la acción de los desarrolladores porque para el pueblo norte del parque de Macete Park, había una promesa en el plan de tener el parque Mercado, así como el parque de Reunión. Pero todos los alquileres, todos los edificios de apartamentos, todos los edificios de condomenios han sido construidos, pero los dos parques no han actualizado. Todavía está en espera. Así que esto es un marco de duda para los desarrolladores y también para los desarrolladores adicionales para planes futuros. Así que le pediría y también en nombre del HOI le pediría a la ciudad que tome acción, que empuje.
Lo siento, Jen, nuestro tiempo está acabado. Mike, adelante. Usted está inmudo.
Hola, ¿pueden escucharme?
Sí, podemos.
Oh, sí. Soy residente de largo periodo en Beriasa y me gustaría agradecer a todos los comisioneros que están tarde y todavía nos están escuchando. Gracias por eso. Me gustaría recordar a todos que cada voz importa. La voz de los vendedores importa y la voz de los residentes que viven en este área también importa. Y solo puedo representarme y creo que muchos de los residentes les gusta el plan de desarrollo y nos gusta mucho y queremos que el free market vaya. El segundo, quiero recordar a todos que, especialmente los comisioneros, no se den molestias por algunas voces o grupos y por favor considere el futuro de nuestra ciudad, no solo el beneficio para un grupo específico.
Okey, Mike, su tiempo está acabado. Ling, usted está inmudo.
Okey, mi familia y yo hemos sido residentes aquí desde que la comunidad se construyó hace tres o cuatro años. Es porque de este plan de pueblo urbano que compramos esta propiedad. Parques, escuelas elementales, todo, como el bar, estaba incluido y emocionante para nosotros cuando comenzó el plan. Primero, me gustaría abordar los problemas de parking del free market. Esto está seriamente impactando a nuestros residentes y a nuestra comunidad. La gente no tiene espacio para parar frente a sus casas. El free market, cuando operan en los fines de semana, ocupaba todos nuestros parques. Así que, enseguida, me gustaría hablar de los dos parques. Eso realmente, realmente necesita ser construido. Ha sido demasiado largo y para el parque Mercado y el parque de Reunión, el parque más cercano tiene un tiempo de 7 a 10 minutos. Todos deberían tener acceso walking a los parques públicos. Realmente necesitamos que estos parques sean construidos como prometió originalmente por la ciudad de San José. Familiares y residentes que caminan por los parques no tienen absolutamente acceso a los parques. Take mi familia, por ejemplo. Tengo un hijo de seis años. Tengo que conducir como 7 o 10 minutos a otro lugar para jugar en el patio. Esto es algo ridículo. Así que realmente esperábamos que el parque realmente necesitaba ser construido. Gracias.
Gracias, Ling. Rob, usted está inmudo.
Hola, gracias por permitir que hablara. Mi nombre es Rob Ficino y soy el desarrollador de los 13 acres en el lado norte allí. Y quiero asegurar a la señora que acaba de hablar de que habrá un parque construido, una parte de la tierra que estamos desarrollando. Y también va a haber, creo, otro 6 o 7 acre, uno que está adyacente, que es parte del viejo parking del free market. De todos modos, quería agradecer al personal de la ciudad. Creo que ustedes han hecho un gran trabajo y estoy feliz con el plan que hemos llegado. Y solo quiero dejar que ustedes sepan que estoy listo para, usted sabe, invertir y crear nuevos trabajos y nueva vivienda para ese área. Okey, eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
Okey, Jose, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse.
¿Cómo están? Mi nombre es Jose Vaya. Estoy con Silicon Valley Debug. También soy el fundador de Soletos Ball y el fundador de El Comité. Fuimos capaces de preservar cinco murals históricos y dos de la inventoria histórica. Lo que quería decir es que, por uno, he estado apoyando y haciendo negocios. Hago un poco de distribución ahí en el free market, así como he organizado algunos eventos diferentes, principalmente porque el free market es un meca muy histórico y cultural para esta comunidad para la clase trabajadora y también para el pequeño negocio de raza, latinos, chicanos, mexicanos, asiáticos y también medio oriental. Y creo que es simplemente, es simplemente indignante escuchar que vamos a ir adelante y deshacerse de esto. Ya hemos removido tantos aspectos culturales diferentes de esta ciudad. No tiene sentido eliminar la economía de esta misma cultura que está disipando. Lo que también sugeriría.
Lo siento, su tiempo estaba acabado. Ben, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse.
Gracias, Ben Leach, Consejo de Preservación y Acción de San José. Obviamente, el free market es un recurso histórico importante, irreemplazable. Feliz de que se reconozca en el EIR. Quiero enfatizar que lo que están revisando hoy en términos de documentos de proyecto invita a la demolición completa. Eso sería una trágica y anexiva regreso a los días más oscuros de la renovación urbana y su perpetuación de desplazamiento y discriminación. No necesita ser el caso y, afortunadamente, vemos un camino como ilustrado por los recientes planes para incorporar un nuevo mercado en el proyecto, pero esto necesita ser vetado. Esta es información nueva significativa, que requeriría, en nuestra opinión, la recirculación de la EIR para que pueda ser correctamente vetado por los vendedores, los interesados, el público general. Creemos que podría funcionar, pero hay muchos detalles que necesitan ser elaborados. Así que optimistas.
Lo siento, Ben, su tiempo está acabado. Brenda, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse.
Hola, mi nombre es Brenda Sendejas. Soy abogada del distrito 5, del este de San José y la vicepresidenta de la coalición Movimiento Coalition, secretaria de Silicon Valley Young Dems y miembro de la RUBA. Hoy estoy en solidaridad con todos los vendedores aquí hoy y solo quiero agradecer a todos los comisioneros que están haciendo su trabajo y estando tarde con nosotros porque esto no es solo sobre la comunidad, sino que esto es sobre nuestros trabajadores esenciales, ¿verdad? Dependen de estos trabajos. Estas son nuestras familias inmigrantes que duermen en miedo todos los días pensando si van a despertar para tener un trabajo. Esto es serio. Esto no es solo eliminar el espacio de trabajo de alguien. Este es su vida. Esto es lo que usan para poner a sus hijos en college. Y solo quiero pedirle a ustedes que escuchen a sus vendedores y por favor crea una oportunidad, háganla una preferencia local para ellos. No sean estos trabajos para nuevos vendedores que van a venir queriendo priorizarlos, escuchen a ellos. Esto es nuestro.
Gracias, Brenda. Siguiente es Jesús. Jesús, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse y comenzar a hablar.
Honorable Comisioneros Planificadores, mi nombre es Jesús Flores, ejecutivo director de la Fundación Latino de Negocios, Silicon Valley. Durante los últimos meses hemos pedido que todos los vendedores se aseguren de que tendrán una ubicación permanente para continuar haciendo negocios y apoyando a sus familias. Desafortunadamente, los cambios propuestos anunciados no cumplen esta visión. Estos cambios sólo permitirán espacio para aproximadamente uno de cada siete vendedores. ¿Qué va a pasar con el resto de los vendedores, sus empleados y sus familias? Nadie sabe. Lo que sabemos es cuán difícil han sido nuestras comunidades por la pandemia de COVID-19. Se ha declarado muchas veces que cualquier redoblaje del lado del free market es probablemente años atrás. No hay razón entonces para aprobar el proyecto como presentado hoy. No hay un plan específico que incluya a todos los vendedores que ahora ocupan el free market. Gracias.
Gracias. Benjamin, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse. Benjamin, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse y comenzar a hablar.
¿Me escuchas?
Sí.
Buenas noches, miembros del comité. Mi nombre es Benjamin Tan. He pedido al comité de planificación asegurar que el pueblo norte complete el parque Mercado antes del desarrollo. He sido residente en la comunidad de Beriasa aquí durante seis años y durante todos los seis años las familias de más de 400 en este vecindario directo han sido bombardeadas diariamente por el pozo de polvo que es el prometido parque Mercado en lugar del espacio verde que hemos prometido. Así que en lugar de esto, estamos atrapados, en lugar de espacio comunitario, estamos atrapados con un enorme peligro de salud no para mencionar ISOR a开. Pido básicamente que el parque sea completado en buena forma para que el desarrollador y los constructores sean capaces de ejecutar lo que se prometió a los clientes finales antes de desarrollar más y sujetar a nosotros, los residentes aquí, a la construcción más intensa, ruido, caos, tráfico y contaminación antes de prometer más. Y gracias por su tiempo y consideración. Buena noche.
Okey, Kelly, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse.
Hola, gracias. Soy Kelly Snyder. Soy profesora de planificación en la Universidad de San José State y creo que todos los procesos de planificación y planes del pueblo urbano y planes están fallidos desde el principio. Estoy pidiendo a la comisión que por favor no recomienda la aprobación de este plan de pueblo urbano y esta aplicación de zoning. Es choquante que en los 14 años desde 2007, que esto ha estado bajo desarrollo hasta que el miembro de la corte Cohen negoció algo la semana pasada, no había provisión para preservar o relocar este recurso histórico. Obviamente, un mal proceso de planificación es lo único que puede contar, no la relocation o no la preservación de este lugar vital y histórico. Tratar de empujar esto a última hora sin vetar, como han dicho los anteriores oradores, es simplemente demasiado poco tarde. Esta no es una práctica de planificación buena. Ignora las consecuencias trágicas de estas tácticas de renovación urbana estilo. Y hay prácticas mucho mejores y compromiso equitativo que podemos hacer. Por favor, voten no.
Gracias. Gavin, usted está inmudo. Adelante, inmutarse y comenzar a hablar.
Gracias mucho. Este es Gavin Laurie de Catalize SV. Quiero hablar sobre el parque. Creemos que el parque en la área es demasiado. Debería haber un máximo de parque. Bajo el plan actual, el pueblo urbano de Beriasa tiene un objetivo de 35% de viajes solo de autoconstrucción, pero 78% de las personas usan automóvil, así que por carpooling. Esto se compara en comparación con el 8% que planifican usando transporte de transporte y el 14% de caminata y bicicleta. Para un centro de transporte de transporte, creemos. For a major transit hub, we believe that an 8% mode share of public transit is way too low. And one of the biggest causes of this is the way too much parking being provided in the area. So the plan targets 14,000 parking spaces within, within the planned area. And we believe this is too much and will negatively affect ridership of public transit. So please, as a condition of approval, set parking maximums for the area. Thank you.
Alex, go ahead and unmute yourself. You are unmuted.
Hello, can I hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I want to pass my appreciation for the commissioner to say obsolete for this meeting. So I, I really, I found there's a lot of news recently from the flea market association trying to urge the commissioner to, to reject this plan. But I, we are really shocked and, and really sad to hear this because the flea market right now, you can see, there's a lot of parking actually empty almost, almost every day. And also they are just open about three days a week. So you can see how little it contributes to the economy of, of our Barriasa community. So what you can hear about, we pay high tax, a higher property tax, but we really want to be developer of this area. And also people mention about culture, but I said, it's too much understanding the culture of the San Jose as the biggest city in the Silicon Valley to one of the nation of the people's lifestyle, right? We want a modern, like even start a one of modern society, a modern community. So a city had, had, made a great job to bring the bar to our, to our society, to our communities. I saw, I think there is no reason to, to urge the city to, to reject this plan. And also, a city has made a great effort to, to, to propose this urban market to try to relocate the, the vendors. So I think it's a really great progress the city has made, the commissioner has made to, 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 to make this urban village come true.
Okay, Ashley, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So if I could just get your full and undefeated attention, I would really appreciate that. I wanted to bring up the fact that the flea market is a place where many cultures, especially Latin cultures, come together to share and sell clothes, food, jewelry, and just so much more. And it's a place where many families work and receive their income. And not only do vendors benefit from the flea market, but the people of San Jose do as well, especially low-income communities. And it's really unfair to those families and the vendors that are being pushed out as a low-income person. I grew up going to the flea market very often because it's one of the only places where my family could afford clothes for school and things like that. And it's a place for minorities to just go and be full-hearted and fully and wholeheartedly themselves while being surrounded by their cultures. And the gentrification is really detrimental to that and to these families. And I would also like to take into, like you to take into consideration COVID-19 and the current situation with the pandemic and unemployment.
Thank you, Ashley. Salvador, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is Salvador Bustamante. I'm a member of Latinos United for Native America. And I'm also a volunteer with the Barriasa Flea Market Vendors Association. I'm here tonight to urge you, to urge the members of the commission to reject the proposed Barriasa Urban Village Plan and the San Jose Flea Market Plan Development Res zoning Project. The current Barriasa Urban Village Plan and the Flea Market Plan Development Res zoning are insufficient and they both have been clogged from the start. With the announcement of the inclusion of a public market, we have seen that changes can be made to these plans. But the proposed changes are, is, are not sufficient and raise lots of questions like who gets to say and who will be relocated? Are they going to temporarily relocate the vendors and move them back later? How much rent will these spaces cost? Who will pay for the infrastructure? The Bum family and the city and the office of City Council District Four have just rushed this idea to emphasize commission into-
Sorry, your time's up. Kelly, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Kelly Fallon. I am a senior policy manager at the Bay Area Council, which is a regional public policy organization representing over 350 members of the Bay Area business community. I'm calling this to support of the current concept of the market park development at the Barriasa Bart Station. This impulse site has great potential to increase our housing stock and reduce our reliance on cars by building 3,450 new housing units, including over 500 affordable units directly adjacent to a transit hub and job centers. We understand the concerns that have been raised about the flea market and are encouraged to hear that the developer has been working with vendors to find an option that will allow the flea market to remain in operation. We encourage the planning commission to allow this discussion to move forward to resolution that benefits the community and supports transit-oriented development of this nature. And look forward to reviewing the details of this plan as there are further resolved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Serena, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my family has lived in the Bay Area for three generations. The Barriasa Flea is a historical monument of our city and is both shameful and disgusting to see how the bum families treating this monument. They've been intentionally blocking accounts, bringing awareness on social media, and they've been removing association members from their grounds of police presence when they were only informing the community. They're offering this urban fantasy using European colonialist ideals as inspiration with no guarantee of how this will be distributed. Community, then there should be no question what the correct decision is. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Really quick, I come to you as a proud son of immigrant parents who found a way to become business owners and provide for their family through their small business at the flea market. This opportunity helped put my brothers through the local community college and to graduate from San Jose State University debt-free. We have now grown up to be professionals in three different sectors of the economy that still contribute to this great city of San Jose. My support mainly goes to the vendors who have been a part of this and helped make it what it is today. It is a shame to hear that the city and the flea market owners are moving forward and taking steps to consider removing a part of the soul of what makes San Jose so wonderful to begin with by accepting gentrification and pushing the very folks who contribute to the cultural richness that is in San Jose and all for profit. I can only ask that the city really consider a plan to think about relocating the flea market in order to keep this part of the San Jose soul alive and to continue to help the small business owners that are hard-working taxpayers of the state, aside from the employment.
My time is up. L, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself. L? Okay, it looks like you are unmuted. You could proceed with your comment.
All right, let's move forward.
Fred, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Vice Chair Bonilla and Commissioners. My name is Fred Buzo, San Jose Director for SPUR. In 2014, SPUR released a white paper entitled "The Future of the Barriasa Bart Station." In that report, it was recommended that even at full build-out of this site, the flea market itself should be retained to the greatest extent possible. Why? Simply put, because the flea market works. From a placemaking standpoint, it works. It's one of the most exciting public gathering spaces in the city. And the plans for this area should really try to build on the energy by working with current vendors and other entrepreneurs. From an economic impact standpoint, it works. It's a place where entrepreneurs, many of them who are immigrants, sell their own business or start their own businesses, selling foods and wares, businesses like Ramos Furniture, Call Their Own Tires and Shoe Pals. As a historical, cultural resource, it works. The flea market is featured in the 2003 international bestseller, The Kite Runner, as a place where Afghan families will go to socialize and sell their wares. Today remains a gathering place for many different communities. It remains unique.
Okay, Chi, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hello, I have been a Barriasa residential for, resident for more than 10 years. I died the urban village proposed because adding a very important part, which is missing for this area for a very long time, that is the office. Office space along with the retail and public space will bring more vibrant to this area. The only concern I have is the parking space for the public market. If the, if there's a fee for the garage, so people will avoid the fee and park in our community. So I will ask, is there a fee or not? And also the things that the city say that they're going to open the Milbury, Milbury Road to the 101, is it still gonna persist? So that's my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Calad, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak. Hello?
Hi, sorry. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kayla Escobedo, a soon-to-be UC San Antonio graduate and the Secretary of the Barriasa Flea Market Vendors Association. I have been a second-generation vendor for over a decade. And my parents thought, who have been in business for over two decades. As many community members and vendors have mentioned, since we've been aware of these plans, we have been negatively affected. The plans have been poorly outreach to the vendors, the ones who will be directly impacted. There is so much lack of consideration to these vendors, leading to my following questions. What makes staff and property owners think that having 3.5 or five acres reserved would be enough for those 750-plus vendors that occupy almost 30 acres currently? Why are we as vendors still being left out of these important conversations? What policies have been created and been established and put on paper that will ensure the vendors will be the ones who occupy these spaces in the open market directly? Thank you.
Thank you. Roberto, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Roberto Gonzalez, President of the Barriasa Flea Market Vendors Association and Resident of District Five. My family has been working at the market for almost 30 years. The market is where I grew up and one day hope to share this with my children as my father did with me. But that dream is at risk, along with the thousands of other vendors' hopes and dreams if these plans continue as is. That is why we urge the planning commission to recommend denial of the deeply flawed draft BBVU plan and flea market rezoning project. The involvement and outreach of the vendors has been the bare minimum and that is unjust and unethical. We are key stakeholders in this issue and as such, we must be given the consideration and inclusion in the decisions that will directly impact our lives. The public market that is touted as to save la puda is nothing more than just fancy pictures of other markets. There are no policies in place that will ensure we will continue there.
Thank you. Kat, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So good evening. My name is Kat Wertham and I'm the Director of Housing and Health Policy at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I'm here tonight to express support for the proposed plans. The leadership group is excited to see a plan that includes up to 3,450 homes near the Barriasa Bart Station. We know the Bay Area is in a dire housing shortage. Lack of housing poses a threat to our economy, our diversity, and our quality of life. It's clear that we know we need to produce more housing at multiple price points, which this development will seek to accomplish, dedicating 25 or 20% of the homes to very low, low, and moderate-income households. Building more housing and commercial space next to BART is good for the environment, good for workers, and good for San Jose. Thanks for the consideration of my comments.
Thank you. Hala, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
I am Kayla Escobedo, Treasurer of the Barriasa Flea Market Vendors Association. I have worked with my friends for about 15-plus years at the market. These two plans are insufficient and flawed. Even after the previous March 14 meeting, there has not been adequate outreach done by the property owners. There was no outreach about this meeting. Although I am glad to see that, it is possible to modify the plans as now they have come up with a new proposal that includes five acres for a public market. However, this proposal is not sufficient. The market is currently using about 20 acres. The plan also lacks important policies that ensure the market and its affordability, as well as the vendors currently outside being the ones who will occupy it. It is obviously a rush plan and it seems to me like an attempt to influence this commission into a clear vote and claim and calm vendors. I urge you to reject both plans and direct staff to return with a sufficient plan. Especially since representatives continue to say that there is no rush when it comes to developing, meaning that they should not have a problem with going, going back and putting more thought and time to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Waskar, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Waskar Castro, Associate Director of Housing and Transportation Policy Working Partnerships. Proud to stand alongside members of the Barriasa Flea Market Vendor Association and all the organizations and individuals who are here advocating for the preservation of the flea market, which is both a piece of the city's history as well as an establishment that serves as a crucial opportunity for hundreds of vendors to sell goods and provide for their families. For decades, the Barriasa Flea Market has been both a premier destination for entertainment and shopping, as well as opportunities for families to generate income. Removing this establishment would displace these vendors, leaving them without the opportunity to make a living. Any plan or landing proposal along Barriasa needs to take into account the historical, cultural, and economic significance of the flea market. While, while this project has moved forward, now is the time to address the very serious issue and ensuring the interests of the vendors are taken into account. We urge the commission to reject the rezoning project and our village plan as currently proposed through genuine, robust coordination with stakeholders. By that, I mean the vendors who are dependent on the plan. We look forward to seeing a scenario where some sort of project is able to cover this without displacing around 750 families.
Sorry, your time is up. Tiffany, go ahead and unmute yourself. You are muted.
Good evening. As a community member and the daughter of a vendor, I say that the gentrification in San Jose needs to end. This project favors the rich and privileged over the minorities that depend on this flea market to provide for their families. San Jose doesn't need more fancy housing. We need funding for public schools and hospitals, things that actually benefit all people. The families that won't get a chance to sell your little piece of land will struggle without the flea market. And a big part of San Jose culture is going to disappear if this project is approved. I hope you all take into consideration the Latino community you work for and not just the people who have the money to pay to live in places like these.
Thank you. Nusha? Sorry if I'm ruining your name here.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so hello, my name is Mutian. And I'm a resident in Barriasa neighborhood. So I want to, first, I would like to say that I respect the Hispanic culture and Hispanic community. However, I'm here to express my support for a city's plan. The reason is that I believe the United States has always been a place with possibilities and a place for all different people to thrive. So if we, if we just keep the flea market, we will just prevent thousands of new residents to come to this area to build this, to build San Jose City. So I, I would recommend that the city should just proceed with the current plan. And I, I, I'm looking forward to the new community being built. And I believe that that will give San Jose a more vibrant future. Thank you.
Thank you. B, Beekman, go ahead. You are muted.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thank you for negotiating 3.5 acres. It was spoken about, it'd be 5 acres today. I heard the term six acres. I think this should be considered eight to 10 acres. I've heard you're going to kick out 700 vendors and leave only about 80 left. Can you work and negotiate towards 150 to 200 vendors in the future? And eight to 10 acres? Can the vendors have more of a place to make decisions? You, you've offered ideas of Europe for this little kingdom here. Why not ask the vendors, you can offer, I think, really good ideas how to plan the future of this village? I think that has to be kind of mandatory at this point. And finally, the, the office towers, they're going to be empty on weekends. It's going to be barren and it's going to be cold and it's going to be a national security thing. Don't do that. Make it like Guadalajara, Mexico. Make it really good. Make it Vietnam, Africa. Do really good things with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devon, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Devin Gonzalez and I am a concerned resident of District Five. I have more than a dozen family and friends who work at the flea market and they make a living there selling at the market. The impact of not including the flea market into these plans would have a devastatingly negative effect on the vendors, San Jose, and the Bay Area as this is a regional destination. We urge commissioners to reject- We urge commissioners to reject the proposed Barriessa Urban Village Plan and San Jose Flea Market Plan Development Rezoning Project and direct staff to do this necessary engagement, analysis, and planning to return with better plans that can ensure equitable development without displacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Spencer, and I'm a San Jose citizen in five years. I now, I understand the urge to fight urban sprawl by developing urban villages. However, this plan is simply gentrification and destruction of a cultural and economic touchstone for San Jose. The tact on market plan only includes 10 to 36% the number of stalls that the current marketplace has, putting anywhere between 290 and 700 families out of their jobs. We need to support our most valuable, not build more luxury apartments or franchise fast food. I urge the commission to reject this rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, Jose, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jose Wall. Uh, I'm a proud vendor at the flea market for the last 20 years. I'm also a proud member of the uh, vendor association. Uh, I find it very misleading how Eric and the builder, the lead builder, has shared. Well, going over from their last previous Zoom meeting we had, uh, the uh, four, uh, the five acres that they're proposing is actually a hilarious joke. I can't believe they're actually undermining us in this extent. Uh, it's already bad enough how they removed the leaders from the flea market with no real cause or reason, uh, just embarrassment how they are treating us. And also, the transparency has been less than bare minimum. Uh, I urge you guys to actually uh, think about it. From the last Zoom meeting to this Zoom meeting, those five acres are a joke because obviously that's not gonna support 700 people, plus a crowd of people that always comes to the flea market. On top of that, this is actually a joke of a uh, humiliation to us.
Thank you. Jeffrey, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Members of the commission, Jeffrey Buchanan, uh, Director of Public Policy at Working Partnerships USA, would encourage you to deny the the PD application and the urban village plan. Uh, this plan before you was deeply flawed and not sufficient to address the public's uh, most significant concerns. Uh, there is no guarantee that uh, the vendors, the historic market, uh, all of the most important uh, topics that you've heard from the public again and again will be addressed by this plan. Uh, there's no reason for this commission to approve uh, the uh, the items before you today. Uh, certainly, even the developer themselves has said that they have no plans to develop uh, this project in the immediate future. Again, the commission should consider uh, creating the necessary public process to ensure uh, that there's transparency and accountability, and that we are are creating the kind of plan that ensures that vendors will not be displaced, that we can maintain the historic market uh, and not displace more uh, of our uh, small businesses and communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Juan, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hello, commissioners. Um, my name is Juan Carlos Araujo. I'm also um, resident of District Three. Um, born and raised in San Jose and also on the Arts Commission. Um, as a long-life resident, I have a lot of great memories at the flea market, and I know through third-generation families who have really been able to sustain and be integral part of our fine city. I don't think that we are against uh, housing. I think we are for progress that should include everybody, uh, inclusive of disenfranchised communities. Um, I also think that the vendors are are unaware, and it's been vocalized, and I hope that this committee could really consider and take the leadership to really help create equitable uh, development without displacement, as one of the community members mentioned. I thank you for your time, and I please implore you to deny this rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Alma, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, uh, good evening, commissioners. My name is Alma. Uh, my family has been at the flea market for over 20 years now. I'm also part of the vendors association. Um, today, I really would like to invite to the commissioners to visit the flea market by themselves, uh, to walk through it and to possibly just casually talk to the vendors, to see their faces, to see how the flea market is an opportunity for the families to earn a living. Um, there is elders that are not here because they don't know how to use technology, but if you go to the flea market and if you visit it, you will see that there isn't their only way to make a living. Also, uh, on the same emphasis, the flea market is a place where minorities like Latinos, Chinese, Vietnamese, even uh, Middle Eastern uh, people are making a living here. We don't need another project. We don't, we don't need another develop. We need support. So please, commissioners, please vote no. Please reject this proposal. Thank you.
Al, you are unmuted.
Uh, yeah, I should I should say that they are, yeah, I'm a local resident here in the Barriessa. I moved here uh, four years ago. Um, the the developers, they promised a lot of things. They they first, they said they will build uh, elementary school and now, and later, they said they will build a park, especially uh, it's the Bacato Park and then your reunion park. Uh, but it was, it was never been built, and uh, it's been seven years, and now they are talking about building the they're redeveloping the uh, the flea market on the south side, even though the the north side is never done. Yeah, so I'm just really concerned, and then, and then, uh, you know, the construction is just ongoing, and then I I see this dust and then a bird flying around because the the park is just left as a bird lot. And then I have asthma, and it's really affect my health. And uh, yeah, I I I hope you guys reconsider the the plan. Thank you.
Okay, Gabby, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
I want to highlight the inaccuracy. Hello? The the inaccuracies and the critical items omitted in the staff report written by Chu Chang, starting with the background section, which states that the commission asked the vendor reps if they had approached the property owners. The commission actually asked the vendor vendor reps if the owners had approached them yet. Regarding the catalyzed SV educational event, they chose to only compare the Berkeley Park Station to the end, how this was on publicly-owned property. They failed to highlight examples of city governments that invest in public markets as critical infrastructure. They failed to mention the CBA between wholesale flower market vendors and SF and the private developers. The summary also excluded a central fact that one of the main reasons why a developer would sit down with the community to negotiate CBA is a potential denial by the city due to community concerns. This confirms that the city does in fact have a role in making decisions on privately-owned property. This makes me question if the planning staff wrote this to be in favor of the development, given the influence the family representative has on city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ying, yeah, Ying, how you are unmuted? Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello. Hi, uh, thank you for your time to kind of hear our voice. So I'm here to kind of support the city plan. Uh, because I think the city plan is kind of along with the uh, goal of the good community and environment, and also as well as the uh, culture. So in terms of the uh, the community, I think what the city plan is will be more organized and convenient that uh, kind of align with the bar station, and with the more people come, then attractive more people. And also, it's benefit for the flea market vendor, because it's not shut down the flea market at all. It's kind of reduced the size of the of the market. So, uh, in terms of the culture, I think um, it's kind of uh, benefit for uh, in terms of the culture, I think it it is kind of combination of the Hispanic culture as well as the modern culture. So I think um, the city plan have make a commendation for uh, building the uh, communities, also the offices in other apartments, as well as consider the uh, flea market. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mariana, you are unmuted.
Hi, my name is Mariana Mijia. I am the Vice President of the Barriessa Flea Market Vendor Association in a District Four San Jose resident. I'm here speaking on behalf of the future of my family's future, but other vendors and workers at the flea market. I worked at the flea market for four years, which allowed me the opportunity to start my own business. I plead to you, planning commission, to do the right, to do the right thing at this important moment, to protect us from those plants. Recommend denial of those two plans. Urge the city council to direct staff to do the right analysis and engagement and planning to protect uh, to return with better plans and protect up vendors in equalable development. Uh, as Eric Chanar said himself, there's no rush. So why, so why are we pushing this this plans forward? The city took zero consideration of the negative impact on our livelihoods in those plants. The urban village will negatively impact low-income communities, immigrants, and small business at the flea market, and deny the opportunity of thousands of future entrepreneurs to start their own business. I plead to you, planning commission, to do the right thing to protect vendors, and I hope you guys saw the letter that we sent to you.
Thank you. Kevin, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I support a city to build the the urban village. I'm the resident and director for the New Haven Community coming to the flea market. The vendors here may not live here, but we do. There are 750 vendors, but there are thousands of residents living here, should be considered. And please remember, 70% people within one mile radius here are Asian. The shoppers here for the flea market always park here in our residency. A few times, the shopper drive their cars, almost hit hit the kids who live here. We are worried for the kids and family. And also, if we don't build urban village, why do we spend money to build a park? Now, the we have Safeway and CVS. We don't really need the flea market. I I know the vendors here have hardship, but then how about the the resident here? We work so hard to support our family, and we pay tax, but then the market is so messy, and shoppers here park their car at our residential area and leave trash everywhere on our street.
All right, Chris, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hi, my name is Chris Lepe, and I'm a 20-year advocate for sustainable and equitable development. I stand with the vendors tonight and for equitable, transparent, and inclusive planning. For reasons I explained at the previous planning commission hearing and by the comment letter submitted by the growing vendor community coalition over the last several months, the entire plan and project processes have been flawed. One of the latest examples is that the first time the vendors heard about the 3.5-acre public market, it was was by the media, not by the applicant or city officials, and today, we're here hearing for the first time about these five acres during a public hearing. This highlights how inadequate the communication with the vendors has been over the last 20 years and over the course of the latest plans. Uh, you need to put these policies and requirements in place now. Don't wait until further uh, um, points in the process, including, for example, building permits. Um, as such, we call upon the City of San Jose Planning Commission to recommend denial until the following conditions are accounted for included in our letter. Thank you.
Alma, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and begin to speak.
Good evening. My name is Alma Redondo. I'm part of Aruba, and I've also lived in San Jose for over 45, 45 years. I have countless memories of family gatherings, gatherings at the San Jose Flea Market. Family from Hayward, Santa Clara, Salinas, Fresno. We all came to the San Jose Flea Market as a destination. This proposed development is the final stake in the heart of the flea market in its quest toward gentrification. The vendors were there first before any residents, which goes to show that the original, the other development was not planned well. If those residents are complaining about not not having enough parking, about not having parks, that's the development issues for that area. It shouldn't affect the flea market. And I think that it's historical, and it needs to continue. I stand with the vendors.
Thank you. Claudia, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'm Claudia, and I am a concerned citizen because I I really think this is unfortunate that we're here. When does the gentrification stop? I think it's horrible that the people that even plan these spaces don't live here. We are part of the community. And everybody has a time when they've gone to the flea market. This is a destination. People come from all over. I feel like with all this gentrification or flavor of Latino culture from San Jose is disappearing, and the pulga is an experience for everybody, not just the people around here. And yes, you guys maybe over-promised things and should have had all these spaces, the park, the parking figured out. And they should not have to hurt these vendors, because they've been here. We've been here. When the how does historic spaces like this get to disappear without it being planned correctly and bringing in the community and the vendors in these conversations? They should be able to be vetted into whatever is built.
Claudia, your time is up. Sorry about that. Um, Brian? You are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, um, commissioners. Thank you for giving us this platform and this time. My recommendation is to deny the project and the proposal as it's come forward. I'm just one of many voices that sees this as a flawed process, um, that didn't seek uh, community input and that um, generated charrettes and community outreach miles away from where um, the impact took place. Um, again, I just reiterate, uh, one of many voices um, that say, please reject this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Decolonial Action Lab, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Luis Moreno, and I am part of the Barriessa Flea Market Vendor Association. The slides presented by Eric Schonhauer don't show a project with the quality, the intelligence, and the sensitivity we need in San Jose, in Silicon Valley, and in the 21st century. Copy pasting pictures with markets in other cities is not a project. Copy pasting pictures from Google and present them as a project is is offensive and unprofessional. Displacing more than 700 workers and 1,500 families from their workplace is not development. It's unfair, inhumane, and violates our basic human rights. The harassment against the leaders of our organization is because they and we are doing what Eric Schonhauer failed to do, and he's just informed the community.
Thank you. Alex, go ahead and unmute yourself.
This is Alex Shor, Executive Director of Catalyzed SV. Hope commissioners had a chance to look at the letter we sent you this morning. Apologize for the delay in getting it to you, but you definitely heard from us last month. One consideration you may want to ask about tonight, or or we hope will be something the city council will look at if this project goes forward. What is the economic impact to our city that would be lost if 700 stalls, if 4 to 700 vendors are no longer able to sell their goods in our city? I just think it's so essential that we know that information before we're weighing this decision, because we do not want to be displacing folks. Uh, this new public market must include affordable rents for these vendors. It must include enough stalls so that as many, if not all, can stay at La Pulga at Barriessa.
Amelia, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi, my name is Amelia. Thank you for the committee to hear our voice. I am a resident who live across the street. So this is my first and only home. I got married, and I have a child by now. But by the time I bought this house, they told me the complete, uh, the flea market will be completely moved out. But now, as my little one is only one years old, she likes to explore outside, but with all the cars coming and go during the weekend and people dumping trash on the ground, which she will likely to approach and pick it up, I don't think it is a safe security, uh, it is a safe neighborhood for my child to grow up any longer. And I see my neighbors, they're selling their house to move to relocate to another place. This is really sad, and uh, I really hope the community could could really hear our residents' voice. I really hope the community could, could really hear our residents' voice who actually live in this area, not only just the vendors. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, go ahead and unmute yourself. Go ahead, Jim.
We can move forward.
Amada, you are unmuted.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, first and foremost, um, for the residents who are for these plans is obviously because, is obviously because of their own benefit. Anyone who promises new development to increase the value of their home will obviously go, go for it. To the woman who complained about the seven to ten minute drive to a park, it is comical to me. Because just wait until there's more development. It won't be a ten minute drive. It'll be at least thirty to forty-five minutes, just like in LA. The flea market has strategically planned out to get the Berriessa Flea Market Association leaders kicked out. They have taken advantage of the elderly immigrant families who did not speak English. And thought it would be easy to get rid of them, but they didn't count on their children and grandchildren to speak up for them. Now they are doing everything they can to stop them from raising awareness. I urge the planning commission to deny this development until they have a written plan for the vendors.
Sorry about that. Um, Christie, go ahead and unmute yourself. Hi, Christie, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Okay, Christina, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello, can somebody hear me there?
Christina, we can hear you, Christina. Christina, your connection may not work, so why don't you try, Christina, can you hear us? Christina, if you can hear us, call in again. Your, your, your connection's not seeming to connect.
Hello, can you hear me?
Jen, let's move forward. Christina, could please call back?
Okay, Lily, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm the resident across the street at Berriessa, uh, at Apex, at Berriessa Crossing. Uh, as a resident living in the urban village area, we suffer the noise, pollution and traffic jam from the cars to flea market every weekend. We really want to have a quiet neighborhood, especially during weekend. Uh, and also parking is a big issue. Many people who visit the flea market always park their car on the street of our community. And in turn, our residents here have no parking spaces. And some other people who visit flea market park their car at the Safeway Plaza so that the shoppers won't have enough space for parking as well. So, um, yeah, I hope the staff at the city planning could hear our voice. Um, especially for us who live within half mile range of the flea market. So not only listen to the vendor, but also listen to our neighbors, uh, the people living in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Monica, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Monica Gil Escobedo. I'm a daughter of, uh, of, uh, vendors in the flea market. Um, I would like to ask the commissioners to reject the plans, not only because the plans presented today are, are flawed, but are also full of lies. What they, what they have presented to you today is completely different to what they have told vendors over the years. Um, the reality facing, uh, that the, that the vendors are facing today and the future. Um, it has already been shown, you know, like since start of the two thousand and seven, uh, many, many vendors have been displaced already, leaving the current, um. Seven hundred plus vendors, leaving them in the limbo and with the action that they took, uh, against the representatives on May second. They, uh, they have left the vendors intimidated and in fear of raising their voice and to speak up in the need of, uh, keeping. Keeping the flea market open. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Catherine Hedges. I'm a member of Catalyze SV and. Our group has looked at the plans and the plan that was submitted today has many flaws, many, much more can be done to benefit the existing vendors. And ensure the development can accommodate both the residents and the workers required to create a vibrant new neighborhood in this area. And I understand that the people who moved in across from the flea market are seeing impacts, but I mean, they moved in across from the flea market. The flea market didn't move in next to them. You know, if. So, you know, maybe they could reach an arrangement for overflow parking. Um, but, you know, all seven hundred plus existing vendors need to be able to maintain their businesses at the new public market or, or the alternative site. And they need to be able to, uh, keep selling during construction. Um, there, you know, they could have a multi-level market to increase the number of stalls, the amount of space.
Sorry Catherine, um, the time is up. Um, if everyone could remember, we only have one minute to speak. Um, I don't want to cut anyone off. Now you guys can say what you want to say. Um, so Evelyn, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, so my name is Evelyn and I totally understand the residents across the street that have moved in there. Um. But also as a daughter of a vendor. It's crazy how they have intimidated. They haven't said verbally anything, but yet they've passed through. The street where we have our, um. Sorry, I'm so nervous. Our stand and they pass multiple times at all hours of the day. Um, just to show presence and show intimidation for us not to speak out. And this is going to affect my family as my husband also helps my dad at that stand. My daughter also works there and she has a learning disability and this has helped her raise her grades in her class.
Thank you, Evelyn. Um, Amada, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I also just wanted to remind everyone, including the planning commission, that you were voted in. Uh, by the San Jose residents, um, and also wanted to remind everyone, you have a voice. Any, anything you can, you know, speak up on, um, and if you don't agree with, um. With our, with us, with what, uh, we're asking for, just put yourself in our shoes. And, um, actually the develop, all the residents are saying that we have that, all the people, all the, I'm so sorry. All the people that are parking in their driveways or their street, actually that was our community before it was yours. Um, that was ours, so, um. You know, just, just take into consideration what we're speaking up on. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, call-in user, you are unmuted.
Well, everybody, this is what happens when you vote in left-wing liberals who are on the take and you guys got, you guys got had, man. You got half the city council or more is Latino and, uh, so is the mayor supposedly, right? And then they, they promised you this bart coming in, which is terrible. And, uh, I mean, who needs another CVS and Safeway? But man, it just kept getting approved and there goes the flea market, man. No parking, they're gonna just whittle it away. Even if they were to keep the place open, if there's no parking, it's not gonna work. This is what happens when you have mass transit and, uh, corporate capitalism coming in from CVS and Safeway. Unfortunately, Main Street community capitalism is dead people. It's terrible and, um, they will hate to see the flea market go away. But it's going to because your city council sold you out, man. They sold you out. And this mayor and everybody else, they're in the pocket of the real estate developers and they, they want, uh, to generate a lot of, uh, property taxes and sales tax.
Okay, Lynn, you are unmuted. Please unmute yourself.
My name is Lynn. I live in Tahu Street in Berriessa. I wanted to disagree with my neighbors. We have flea market and we have many parks. We don't need duplex houses. We need places to go in the weekend. I don't want no more traffic. Please leave flea market open. I'd love my, my kids' toys there.
Okay, Christina, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to recommend, uh, that the commission not approve this project as it's currently being proposed. Um, I've had a long, uh, history of, um, going to the flea market and I bring my children there on weekends even now. We actually come from very far away because, uh, the Bay Area has really become a cultural desert and. Um, it's one of the few places where we can continue to go and enjoy community and the cultural diversity of, of the city of San Jose. Um, the flea market, you know, has seven hundred plus independent small businesses. It is a place of opportunity to establish entrepreneurship, um, and, and economics for disadvantaged communities. Um, and I don't think seven weeks is enough time to adequately put a plan together to ensure that. Those existing small businesses can continue to operate. Thank you.
Okay, Copper, you are unmuted. Copper, you are unmuted. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Copper, you are unmuted. All right, Jen, let's keep going.
Okay, um, that was actually the last one. Um, Kevin and Luis have already spoken.
Got it.
Oh, wait, uh, I don't know what Jim is supposed to.
Okay. All right, colleagues, uh, that concludes the public comment section of today's, well, tonight's public hearing. With that, we now, uh, the floor is now to the applicant, uh, who will have an opportunity to respond to public comment.
Thank you Chair Bonilla. Um, I just want to take the time to, um, clarify some of the facts that were mentioned. But I think overall what we're hearing with a range of, of opinions from the public comment is that. City building and neighborhood building is very challenging. And we've been working on this new urban neighborhood for twenty-one years. And we have a lot of competing interests that we're trying to, to satisfy. But to get to the facts first, there are four hundred and thirty individual vendor owners. That's the number. So it's not seven hundred, it's not seven hundred fifty. There are four hundred and thirty individual vendor owners. There are more stalls than that because some vendors choose to operate more than one stall. So those, those are the numbers. In terms of the acreage, when we came before you in March, the plan had three point five acres of public plaza. In front of the bart station in the central plaza. In order to lay out a vendor stall plan that had a sufficient amount of space. We added acreage. So the current public plaza that you saw in the diagram in red is five full acres. That's the plaza itself. In addition, as we mentioned, we have ground floor retail space. In all of the buildings that surround the plaza. And on the busy weekends, we envision closing the streets along the plaza to expand the, the, the market area. And with all of those approaches, we should be able to accommodate most of the vendors. In terms of the competing interests. There are four main components to the neighborhood. There's the office development. The office development was requested by the mayor and the council unanimously in May of twenty sixteen. They told us to come back with a revised plan. Remember, this village was approved in two thousand and seven. We have an approved development on the flea market property in two thousand and seven. The city council in twenty sixteen said come back with a revised zoning that adds millions of square feet. Of office development, one point five to two point two million square feet of office development. And in working with the staff over the last few years, that number has grown to three point four million square feet. Because it doesn't make sense to spend nine billion dollars on a bart extension. If you're not going to put intense employment and intense housing next to the station. The other component is housing. We're in a housing crisis. The city wants more housing and many people want affordable housing. So our plan includes actually constructing the city's required amount of affordable housing on site. Within this new neighborhood, instead of simply paying fees and letting someone else do it. So we need the space for the housing and we need the space for the affordable housing. As you heard from many neighbors, there's a desire for parks and for creek trails, which are mandated by city policy. And we need space for that. On the south side of the, the flea market property. We have, um, seventeen point one acres is committed to riparian habitat and creek trail. That's mandated by city policy. The neighborhood parks that have been discussed also mandated by city policy. And on the south side of the flea market, we're adding two additional acres of neighborhood park. In addition to the seven point two acres of neighborhood park that we are dedicating on the north side of the neighborhood. But I have to remind everybody, the parks only get built and finished if the new housing gets built. Because the way the city funds park development is through fees on new housing. So the parks will not be finished and the additional parks and trails will not be built unless the housing units get built. And then lastly, of course, which we've been mainly talking about today, is the flea market and the space for an urban market. So there are four components, office, housing, including affordable, parks and trails, and a marketplace. And we've done the best we can to present a concept plan that meets all of these competing, um, desires in the community. And what people need to know is that we're only at the start of the process, not at the end. The only thing on the table tonight is the general plan, which is the urban village plan and the zoning. That's it. And general plan and zoning do not determine how many vendor stalls there are. Are the stalls ten by ten or twenty by twenty? Are they red? Are they purple? That is not what zoning or general plans do. That is determined at the next phase of the process, which is what's called a plan development permit. That is a discretionary process that has to go to public here. That is a discretionary process that has to go to public hearing. And it's through that process that we would have intensive community engagement to talk about the details. What, how does it lay out? What does it look like? And questions like, how will people move in? What will the transition be like? And ultimately, what kind of rent will be necessary to support that kind of development? So we hope that the commission finds that we are working to balance all of these competing interests. That we want to create a new urban neighborhood that has a spectacular public market that reflects the culture of San Jose. Yeah, we used a picture of a market in France. That wasn't to say we were going to bring French culture here. It was simply to show the physical layout of a market in an urban plaza. This market will reflect the cultural diversity of San Jose and the existing flea market. That's the whole purpose. So we hope that you will allow the urban village plan developed by the city with the input of literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of residents. I was at every meeting. And our development plan that also had community engagement with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of residents. And allow us to move to the next phase where we roll up our sleeves, we work together, we involve everybody, and we come up with the detailed plan of how the urban market will be laid out and function in this new urban neighborhood. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sheenhour. All right, so with that, we now open it up to questions from the commission to the applicant, the city staff. Colleagues, do we have any questions? I see Commissioner Lordenlaw, Commissioner Torrance, so we'll go with Lordenlaw first.
Thank you, Chair. Is it, sorry, is this time just for questions or is commentary appropriate too?
You know what, just, just, just throw it all in. Let's just get it moving.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I want to thank the vendors and the members of the public for showing up tonight and showing up back in March and being engaged throughout this process. You know, I personally, I grew up in a low income family and flea markets were a fixture of my childhood, including the various flea market. And so when we talked about this back in March, the flea market wasn't really part of the urban village plan at all. There was no permanent solution for the future of the various flea market. Most mentions of flea market were as a name for the site rather than about actual flea market vending. And this type of vending was only mentioned as an interim use. You know, something that could be done on empty lots before construction began. And, you know, I think everyone on this day agrees that a BART station is, it's really important to be building dense housing and jobs near a BART station. But back in March, we also recognized that there was an issue that there was no, not really a plan moving forward for the flea market. So that's why we pushed back. That's why we're having this discussion again tonight. And I want to say, I do think that this public market designation in the urban village plan is really important. As, you know, in terms of providing a venue flea market vending, in terms of reminding us that jobs near transit isn't just office jobs, that needs to include, you know, all sorts of sectors and income levels. And then also, I, I really think it's important, this concept of having flea market style vending and brick and mortar retail next to each other, that attracts a very wide array of clientele. And I think it's going to benefit, excuse me, benefit both kinds of business. And personally also, I think it's something that we should be seeking to include in other urban village plans as well. I'm going to leave it there for now and let others speak.
Commissioner Torrance.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everybody. This has been highly educational, this whole process. So I'll, it's hard to know where to start, but I'll just start at the beginning. So I'm coming at this as a small business owner myself, who has had the, the, just like the vendors at the flea market, I've had the chance to, to run my teaching business in an affordable space. And that has made all the difference to the success of my business. So I completely understand the need for affordability. And I also need to say, I think at this point, I think Vera, tell me if I'm wrong here, but I want to let you know that I did some homework, I think a lot of us did, in the meantime, since the March meeting. And I got to listen to the Catalyze SV presentation after. So I wasn't there that night, but I listened to it on Facebook. I watched it afterward. So I want to disclose that, that I did, you know, participate by listening to it afterward. And I also took my family to the flea market two weekends ago and we went and walked around. And what I saw there was a neat, clean, beautiful space with families enjoying themselves, just like we've heard described tonight. And that gave me a really good sense and it felt familiar, like I had been there as a kid and just didn't remember. So all of that to say, I feel like what is lacking here again is the consensus. I took a tally and it was 41 to reject and seven to support. So the support list did grow since the last meeting, but in my opinion, not enough. And I, so this leads to my question, which is, I guess, to Eric or city staff. Where does a CBA, a community-based agreement fit in, in this process? Would that be something that we would need more strongly now? Or would that fit in, as Eric says, in phase two? Where we're really working out the details? It seems like it would need to be at this phase worked out.
Mr. Sheenhour, if city staff can answer the question for Commissioner Torrance, that'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Staff, do we have an answer for Commissioner Torrance?
There's a question for Vera. Vera?
CBAs are agreements that are reached between a property owner and a community organization or organizations, as was in the memo. Obviously, the city could facilitate such an agreement if they were asked to. But we would generally not be a party to that type of an agreement. And so that type of an agreement should be reached as early as possible in the development process. And usually the consideration, as I mentioned in, you know, as was mentioned in the memo, the supplemental memo to the commission, the consideration for that is that people agree not to oppose a development project when they have reached an agreement for certain benefits out of a CBA. We haven't, I mean, CBA. And we haven't seen that here, but the earlier in the process, the more beneficial and the more predictable it is. But I suppose it could happen at any time before the actual project is approved.
Okay, so my reason for bringing that up, of course, is because I don't want to say yes to this and then not have a CBA happen down the road. I feel like it should have already happened. And I know that it was a short timeline. It's actually not a short timeline to make it happen. Eric said he wants to work together and involve everybody, but why has that not happened as significantly as I feel it should have up to this point? And getting something in writing, in written language of, you know, the, the details. So that's, that's all for me for now and I yield the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Torrance. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bonilla. I'm going to just ask the questions right now and leave my, my opinion and commentary till later, just to clarify. But there, there's the, there seems to be the impression that the application was changed to incorporate an open air market. But the way I'm understanding it is the open air market is conceptual. It is not, there's no change in density of, of entitlement or the entitlements in terms of, you're still looking for 3,450 residential units and 3.4 million square feet of commercial space. So really, it's the same application that we looked at in March. The, the, the five acres, you, you mentioned the, the concept of an open air market. Is, is there not the possibility of having all the vendors, space for all the vendors and having a first right of refusal to these vendors as opposed to different vendors? And what type of cost would these be offered at? I imagine it'll be different. And you know, tho- those are the questions I have. Oh, and the, the reference, there was multiple references made to leaders of the association vendors being kicked out. What exactly are they referring to? If, if, if Eric knows what they're referring to or somebody, somebody knows what they're referring to, I, it would be helpful information to see if that's even accurate. Thank you.
From, from the city side of the house, someone can answer Commissioner Garcia's questions first. That'd be great.
I just want to speak very briefly about the entitlements and the proposed development capacities versus what is being proposed now in terms of open space and urban market. So as I said initially in the presentation, the area of commercial development that is being reduced to increase for this 3.5 acres in front of BART station, this is a very marginal reduction, reduction of that land. It's about 1.4 acres, which is in the larger scheme of things, is not that significant. We also understand from the project applicant that adding two additional floors of commercial space vertically will, you know, offset or compensate for that difference. So just to answer your question, Commissioner, so the, the, the plan actually will need only very minor modifications, same with the zoning, and we're allowed to have this open market there. With that being said, I just want to clarify that from the get-go, the open space chapter or the various urban village plan calls for place making uses, activating uses. So what we're trying to do is to connect what is being proposed in terms of an urban market with the original vision of place making in the plan. If you look at that chapter, you look at the original images, we always talk about something called activating uses. Things that happen that central open space and in front of BART station that is part of the entire community in the neighborhood. So what we're doing is just working towards a solution and, yes. So that, those are the minor changes, at least in the planning and the zoning that are needed.
But those are just possibilities. It doesn't change the square footage and the unit count that the original application had.
It doesn't really change. Like I said, we verified actually we worked on the document. So this is a very minor change, but it's allowable. So that's a really good news is that the, the, the urban market can be accommodated there. We just need to make a minor changes and it will work, basically.
So it is, if I could chime in, it is a change. So what we need the commission to do is recommend that the, the, the plazas, the BART plaza be expanded so that the combined park and Central Plaza are five acres instead of the 3.5. That's a specific change in the urban village plan and a specific change in the zoning. And then in addition to that, the text needs to change. The, the, an urban market needs to be an explicit use, permanent use allowed in the urban village and the zoning. So that's what's different. When we came to you in March, the plaza space-
First right of refusal at the same cost, at the same cost that they're paying today?
No, of course not. Not in a zoning, you don't, that's-
I just wanted to ask, okay.
That's a PD, that is a, that is a-
The zoning.
Commissioner Garcia, if I may, answer that question. Under California law, the city cannot rent control commercial uses.
I'm, I'm just asking a question is all I'm asking.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for asking the questions, Commissioner Garcia. Any, any, any other questions for my colleagues? The, the mysterious glasses that I see here. Commissioner Oliverio, we cannot see you. There you go.
There you go. Oh, thank you, Chair. So back in 2007, when I was on the city council, I was the only vote against the flea market converting because I was sympathetic to the merchants and the stories that they told. But that's what the city council decided to do. Things moved along. They have entitlements today. They can build today. They can walk away from today's meeting and go ahead and build and close the market and be done. But in 2016, again, as a city council member, we said that, listen, if you're going to have a BART station here, then we want significant jobs and we want significant housing. So the applicant is back. We heard the testimony from the merchants and they have come with this new proposal. We, as a planning commission, are not a sequestered jury. We know very well that Councilmember Cohen has agreed and wants this to happen and who is a representative of this district and has decided this is good. And so at the end of the day, as we both, as we all know, we, the delay in the last meeting has given the opportunity for the city council to co-in and be creative and find the solution. That's what the council can do. Planning Commission is a very narrow perspective about enforcing city guidelines and general plans. So ultimately, we already know the conclusion. So with that said, I'd simply like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And although I would prefer the city council make those proposed requests that the applicant has asked for, I will then include them for the sake of this motion to include the text amendment and to include that a market of five acres be an allowed use on the parcel. And that's the motion.
Are, are we seeking motions right now?
No, we're, we're not seeking motions right now, but, but I will say this, but he, but he did make a motion. But on that point, I, I am going to talk. So where we are-
We should first find out if there's a second, if there's no second.
But I, I am chairing tonight, so I will do it this way respectfully. So what I will say about this is, I'm actually going to agree with you. That's the irony. Where we are right now, colleagues, is we are now at the end of the line. I think Commissioner Oliverio said it best. We do it to an extent already know where this is headed from a legal standpoint. So let me actually ask Vera some questions so that the public, and we can hear this as well. And to be very clear, I, I am extremely sympathetic to the cause of the flea market, but we also have to understand the legislative reality we're living in right now as well. Vera, obviously, if we were to support the motion, the next stop would be the city council, correct?
Correct.
If we were to reject the motion and vote against the project, the next stop is the city council, correct?
Correct. Planning Commission just makes a recommendation.
If we were to tie tonight, 3-3 hypothetically, it still goes to the city council, correct?
Correct.
If we were to walk away from this meeting right now, it still goes to the city council, correct?
Correct.
Point I'm trying to make, colleagues, is this. We do have an opportunity to send something to the city council that we have earned. When we started this conversation, I don't remember the month anymore. It started with nothing. Now we're walking in with about five acres. We arguably worked outside of our purview, I get that. But rather than rejecting, rather than just shooting off, I would much rather use this time for all of you to think about what you would want to recommend. It is in our right, it is our purview to make recommendations to the council that will allow for them to take that into account. I think if we want to be helpful to the, to the vendors and all parties, we have to actually also be honest about the authorities that we have versus the authorities that the council has. The council has the ability to, with the discretion and the ability to continue having these discussions, to continue shaping this, to continue moving it forward. We are literally at the end of the line because regardless of what happens tonight, we, 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 we have run out of time. And, and equally, we, we are out of legislative tools to allow for us to do more than what we've done already. What we've done already is quite monumental. This is one of those moments where, because maybe it felt easy, no one's recognizing what, what it is that we did. What we did was we generated five acres of, of, of a vendor opportunity within the flea market. I mean, to maintain the flea market within the proposed development. That, that to me is an important- That that to me is an important. I don't want to say victory for lack of a better word. It's an important step forward that in my mind, we should want to codify and send to the city council as part of our recommendation. So, you know, I'm getting older, so I'm getting crankier, I guess. So my apologies, but but at the end of the day, I do think it's important to say that. And let me also say this, I I I've been a vendor. My wife's worked there. My sister-in-law's worked there. I got my first cat here when I was a kid. That was the only entertainment I could do because I could afford it. Uh, before COVID, uh, that's where I took my kids to the flea market next to the arcade. Uh, and I play skeet ball with my kids there because it's affordable family fun. On the weekends, I'll listen to the mariachis there. And as I said last time, I have my pepino con limon. This is not a flippant decision on my part. You know, last time around, I got criticized for even pushing for the deferral. But we did it. We did it collectively and we were able to get to this point. But I do want to be really upfront with all of you. We are literally at the point, and you heard it from our city attorney directly. No matter what we do, it's going up. So as far as I'm concerned, as 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 someone with twenty-six years of legislative experience, let's not lose this opportunity to send this thing up to the council with our with our fingerprints on it, with with us having shaped it to some extent. So tho- those are my thoughts. With that respectfully, the council, council member, Commissioner Oliverio did did make a motion and legally I do have to recognize that. So I know. I'm sorry, say it again.
I second.
Okay, so we now have a second. With that though, Commissioner Casey, you were going to say something.
Yeah, I was hoping that we could come to some sort of clarity on types of recommendations we'd like to include in addition to Commissioner Oliverio's recommendations. I agree that this is an inevitability, but to the extent we can shape what goes before the council and what they ultimately consider, I would like to if we can, provide some sort of recommendations that ensure to the greatest extent possible that this flea market appears on the site.
Vera, I was just going to say, when you went off camera, I'm like, these are all coming to you. So Vera, wha- what is the response in terms of what we can recommend? Again, more for the rest of the commission to hear it.
I don't want to make any suggestions, but I can certainly comment on if anything that's recommended is problematic.
Okay. Is there anything, is there a friendly amendment you would like to make? Commissioner Casey to Commissioner Oliverio, since he is the author of the motion and Vera can clarify if it's legally permissible or not.
Uh, I guess alternatively, either the council considers a a condition being a community benefits agreement or a development agreement between the city and the applicant to ensure that to the greatest extent possible that the flea market exists on the site.
Vera, is that appropriate? Is that too vague? Does it need more specificity or is that just fine?
I think that's problematic because development agreements need to be applied for by the developer and then negotiated with the city. And that usually takes quite a bit of time. And again, that's a voluntary agreement between the developer and the city. If they're not able to come, you know, that we we cannot require someone to come to the city for a development agreement. Nor can we require someone to enter into a CBA, a community benefit agreement. That's a voluntary agreement also by the developer and community groups. And generally, and so we can encourage that.
That's.
We can tell people, we can tell people, we encourage them to get together, to come to some type of an agreement about transitioning the flea market. Um, but to require that is is inappropriate. Um, the the, now what could happen is if the city council were to decide to deny the project, they could certainly say, we might consider it again if you did something like this. But I think that from the standpoint of wanting to, you know, say we want to approve this with conditions, the condition would have to be to encourage.
Can we perhaps, and this this can be Commissioner Casey's, I'm kind of spitballing here, but would you be open to maybe Commissioner Casey suggesting an MOU that lays out the next phases of this project?
I would, uh, but just as a point of clarification to Vera, could we ask the city council to deny it unless a a development agreement or a community benefit agreement is considered by the applicant? Phrasing it in that sense, not conditioning it on.
What do you mean by considered?
We recommend. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a way to parse the wording so that it's not, that we, I still get my point across and it's worded in a way that still has my meaning in it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I think what you can, I think you could probably say something to the effect is we recommend denial. Um, but we are willing to reconsider if the, if there is an agreement, that there is an agreement to be reached with the community, between the community organizations, the vendor associations and the developer, the property owner, um, you know, that. But again, you know, if they're unable to satisfy, recall that, you know, the the downside here is that the developer doesn't necessarily need to come back with anything. They already do have an entitlement for for commercial and residential on that property. It's just not at the density that the city would like to see there, under the city's recommendation that is before you tonight. So it it's not, it's not that you can necessarily force that hand here if you wanted to. There is, you know, they they are able to develop, but under a different development plan.
Understood. Thank you.
So Commissioner Casey, will you be recommending anything or are you?
I'd actually like, if it's possible to chair, if we could hear Eric's comment, I think he's got something to say.
Sure, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, the, um, uh, thank you. That that you you didn't close the public hearing, so I raised my hand.
Right. That's how you're getting in, Eric.
Yes. No, I just gonna, I'm just making a suggestion. Uh, I'm not sure, um, how, where, I'm not sure if the commission sees the transmittal memos that go from the the staff to the city council. Uh, do you, do you guys see those?
It's part of that.
Okay, so.
Encouraging raising, yeah.
Yeah, so what, so what happens is the the planning department will prepare a summary of your deliberations that go to the city council. Okay, and off, I I've been doing this for thirty years, so I've worked with a lot of commissions. And sometimes it's helpful to just have a straight motion, like that's on the floor. And then each of you can state your thoughts and priorities that the city council should consider, not as part of the motion, because if it's part of the motion that you have to debate and argue and get agreement. You can each make a clear statement that this is what's important. The staff will transcribe it, they will insert it in the memo, and it will go to the city council as your comments and direction to them as an individual commissioner. So I just throw that out as a way to get more, each of you have your own individual thoughts in the memo.
So, so thank you for that, Mr. Shinar. Commissioner Casey, do you want me to come back to you? Because I do have Commissioner Garcia lined up in the queue.
Please do. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Garcia.
I I was going to request exactly what Eric just, uh, you know, just said that if we could, before we actually vote, because I realize there's a motion and a second, uh, you know, on on this, if we could just before we actually vote, give thirty seconds each to say what our thoughts are on it out loud and things for us to consider as we vote and of course the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the author of the motion then accept a friendly amendment from me? Um, again, just basically, I think encapsulating what Commissioner Casey was going, I like where you're going. Uh, suggesting, uh, an MOU that details the next phases of the development, just a suggestion.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so as as laid out that, uh, what we're doing tonight is, uh, the first step in what would follow, and those details would come afterwards, again, through a public hearing and a public vote on things the applicant mentioned, right? What would be all the terms and conditions? What are all those levels of detail? Those are to be hashed out with the applicant and the city and the community afterwards. Uh, I don't think we could conceivably do an MOU uh, before going to city council. So I mean, ultimately, that what it, what you desire will transpire. Um, but if you want to say, in my opinion, I believe MOU should contain something specific, then that would be helpful.
My thinking was more, yes, you're right. Well, obviously, all of these steps are going to happen after the fact. I'm not suggesting at all that we magically, you know, the open up the skies and these things will come out, but more of a a suggestion to remind folks about the the value of putting these steps into some sort of document that the public can understand and clearly see the steps.
How about this, uh, Chair? Um, in my motion, I would like to make it very explicit that the planning staff, when this comes to city council, that they make some measure of their PowerPoint or, um, final recommendation to include for the public, so it's easy to understand for both council members, staff and general public and vendors, that this will be the process that it's, it's not specific to colors and
Correct.
and measurements, but it's specific in that this is the type of process that will move forward. And I would only ask planning staff, is that something that could be accomplished in your, when you present to council? And that's a question for planning staff.
Sure.
I I would think that that's entirely possible. We just need to, uh, discuss the different steps and we will be happy to help one per presentation that clearly lays out what the 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 following steps are. Um, yeah, the the answer is yes, we can have the BART one presentation.
Okay, great. Uh, Chair, are you comfortable with that then, incorporating that?
I I am comfortable with that, Commissioner Oliverio.
Is that okay, the seconder?
And could I?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Oliver, could I just, uh, clarify, want to make sure we're clear on what, um, what you're looking for in in the motion? Is that to kind of lay out clearly what the next steps would be then? For such a, you know, kind of coming to agreement on a, on those next steps?
Yeah, I would think, Jared, as you're presenting to city council and you say, and should city council vote to rec, vote to approve, uh, we want to let you know, these are the steps that would follow for, uh, you know, the construction of commercial, construction of housing for the implementation of the new five acre open market. These are the steps that would occur. Uh, I mean, you know, to Chair Bonilla's point, uh, you know, the understanding and making this conveyed so it's easily understood. It doesn't get down to those nitty gritty details. It'll be worked out through community meetings and through staff. But it does set out that there will be a process going forward, that that's not the end.
Correct. Thanks for the clarification.
And and for my edification, what that means is that you're just setting forward the steps on how the city will consider the five acre change from what is in the current plan, is in the current proposal.
Uh, correct.
How we're going to flesh that out. Okay, okay. And that's not going to be a staff recommendation. I'll just give that information because staff is going to recommend whatever staff recommends. But if that's what planning commission wants staff to add, they can add that. And make it part of the motion.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Here, I'm not sure I quite understand because the, um, the change, we we will be bringing, if if the planning commission directs us, we would be bringing changes to the zoning and the, um, various of our plan to allow this, um, flea market, right? This five acre flea market. So that that would be before council that night. So that the plans and the zoning would be changed to allow it. I think what what you're saying is that we would outline what the likely steps are beyond the council, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
Yes. Perfect. I know Commissioner Garcia has had his hand up patiently. Commissioner Garcia.
Apologies, I meant, didn't lower it.
Oh, sorry. Okay. All right. Well, then, Commissioner Torrance said she was okay with the friendly amendment. Thank you both for for accepting that. Um, seeing no more questions from my colleagues, I now, uh, call for the vote. Caballero is absent, so in order, Bonilla, I, Casey.
Hi.
Garcia.
Uh, emphatic, no. And and the reasons are, I I just can't, uh, I can't see the displacement of these vendors, whether it's seven hundred, whether it's four hundred, whether it's one hundred. Um, it's, it's going to happen and 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 I can't, I don't see the benefit of, um, all these paycheck protection programs and stimulus programs and all this stuff if we're turning around and and displacing, uh, small business owners, you know, at this time. Particularly at a time where, uh, the dust has yet to settle from the pandemic. From from fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty to first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, there's been a one point six percent increase in vacancy in office alone, uh, in Silicon Valley. There's not a shortage of 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 commercial space. And let's not confuse commercial space with jobs. That's, that's a location for a job, infrastructure, but it doesn't, it's not a job. Right? So, um, and and of course, the the historic landmark that the flea market is. But but most importantly, I just cannot support this without a plan for the for the existing vendors. As the, as as this is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lardenwall.
Hi.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Hi.
And of course, Commissioner Torrance.
Hi.
Without the motion passes, five to one with Garcia being a no. And I do want to state for the record, we're not displacing. We're purely moving forward our item with, um, giving everyone the best opportunity to make their case heard at the city council that does have the full legislative power and authority to do as they wish. So with that, we are done with item nine. I don't even know where we are anymore.
Minutes?
Minutes. Item nine.
Minutes were already done. I believe you're on twelve.
What is twelve? Uh, twelve is good and welfare. Report from city council.
Or hang on one second, let me find it.
And just for the record, there was nothing for eleven, correct?
Correct.
Here it is. Okay, so the only thing that I have is from April twentieth, there was a, um, conforming pre-zoning at fifteen, four fifteen Woodward Road. Um, and it was approved by the city council.
There you go. All right. Anything else to report from the city council?
No, that's all.
All right, thank you, Michael. Uh, item twelve B, subcommittee formation reports and outstanding business. Anything on that front?
I'm sorry, I was looking, what did you, what?
That's okay. That's okay.
If I, if I may interrupt, um, if I may interrupt, we skipped over number ten, which is to continue the general plan public hearing to May twenty-sixth.
Ah.
And this is the first cycle of our general plan hearings, um, this year. And so, um, if you could get it, we could get a motion and the commission formally continue this. I'd appreciate that.
Great. For, so then I'll go back to item ten for item ten.
Thank you.
You know, I'm just going to motion, a motion to continue the, go ahead, Commissioner Oliverio.
No, I just, I have a second in your motion.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, Commissioner Bonilla with the with the motion, Oliverio with the second to continue the general plan public hearing to May twenty-sixth. Can we get a vote? Caballero's absent, Bonilla, I, Casey.
Hi.
Garcia.
Hi.
Lardenwall.
Hi.
Oliverio.
Hi.
Torrance.
Hi.
Uh, the motion passes unanimously, six, zero. And now we will return to twelve B. Thank you. Twelve B, Michael, subcommittee formation reports and outstanding business.
I don't have anything on. Um, yeah, so nothing.
Thank you. Uh, item twelve C, commission calendar and study sessions. Anything we should, we should know?
I don't have anything in that, uh, either.
Okay, thank you. Item twelve D, colleagues, anything for the public record? Okay, thank you. Item 12D, colleagues, anything for the public record?
Have a great night. Good job, good job chairing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, with with that, everyone, have a great night and see you at the next one.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.